Going in, start what you like.
I'll hold that. Good evening, everyone. It's April seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three. This is the GBOS regular meeting. The Girdwood Board of Supervisors, its committees and subcommittees are subject to the Alaska Open Meetings Act, as found in Alaska Statute forty-four dot six-two dot three-ten and Anchorage Municipal Code one point two-five, public meetings. The Girdwood Board of Supervisors operates under the Girdwood Public Meeting Standards of Conduct. I'll call this meeting to order at seven oh-two P M. I'm Brianna Sullivan, co-chair, Parks and Recreation and Cemetery Supervisor. Also in the room are we left.
Me too. Mike Edington, co-chair, Land Use Supervisor.
Carrie White, Fire Department.
Jennifer Wingard, Roads.
And is.
Go ahead, Amanda. Amanda Sassy, Public Safety.
Thank you, everyone. Are there any disclosures this evening? Being and hearing none, there's also an opportunity to say when the item comes up. We'll go to agenda revisions and approval. I would entertain a motion to approve April seventeenth agenda.
Move to approve the agenda.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second, go.
Thank you, Guy. Any other discussion on the agenda? We'll go by assent. Are there any objections to the agenda? Okay, the agenda is approved. I would entertain a motion to approve both March twenty-seventh meeting minutes and the April tenth meeting minutes.
I move to approve the March twenty-ninth, March twenty-seventh meeting minutes, and the April tenth GBOS W C joint special meeting minutes.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second on the minutes?
A second, yeah.
Okay, thank you, Guy. Any discussion on the minutes? Go by assent as well on those. Are there any objections to either of the minutes being approved? Okay, hearing and seeing none, those minutes are approved. Go to announcements. And, oh, before I do, yes, announcement. The public is encouraged to ask questions and provide comments. Please raise your hand and wait to be acknowledged. To help discussions stay productive, please direct your comment to the board rather than other members of the public and keep your comments focused on the business under discussion. Please be respectful of everyone's opinions. And everyone online, please maintain your muted status and cameras off until you're called upon. And then if you say your name, everyone in the room, please come close enough to these microphones, which is in the middle of the aisle, so that everyone online can share you equally. The announcement next is the final Racial Equity Forum hosted by Alaska Humanities Forum. It's scheduled for April twenty-fifth. That's Tuesday from six to eight P M. in this Girdwood community room. Also, GBSA is hiring. Seasonal Parks Caretaker one and two are now posted on the MOA jobs page. Also, DOT is conducting outreach for the Safer Student Highway Project. See the project website for details and provide comments. Comments end April twentieth. So that is very soon, and we were told that commenting now is the most beneficial before all the work gets started. Alaska Trails is seeking support for Alaska Long Trail Projects for Inclusion in the Fiscal Year two thousand and twenty-four State Budget. Project list is available here on this link, and information on how to provide comment is also provided here. Page, going on to number one, introductions, presentations, and reports. Cyberbullying concerns. I could start, or we have Tommy in the room. Would you like to come forward for the microphone, please? Thank you.
The Public Safety Advisory Commission Committee is discussing cyberbullying concerns as a public safety issue. There's a police lieutenant from Homer who has a program that is outlined in these two links on the first page of this paper here. And I've contacted him, and we're starting negotiations for him coming to Girdwood to do a presentation in October, trying to figure out how to make it mandatory. That's, I'm being facetious somewhat. It's, in Homer, they had cyberbullying going on, and there have been two suicides, and also child sexual events in court related to cyberbullying. And the, the school is doing a program on May third that's going to talk about the internet. But this, the lieutenant, Ryan Browning's talk is more to the point of cyberbullying, and it's a concern, and we'd like to, the Public Safety Advisory Committee is going to vote on it at this next meeting. We'll bring the, a proposal to the Girdwood Board of Supervisors to see if you can help support the cost of it. The cost is Lieutenant Browning driving up here, staying overnight, and his salary as a police officer. So we'll get more details on that if it comes up. One thing that he told me that was very chilling was that, he says, you probably dealt with bullies when you were growing up. I said, yeah, it's a common thing. He said that, when you, he said, when you and I were growing up, when we got home, then we'd be safe. And that's not the case anymore. Cyberbullying comes right into your house, and kids don't talk to their parents about it. It's a, so this will help get it out in the open and make our kids more safe. So we'll tell you more about it.
Yep, just a question. So this is directed for something that would be presented here, parents or?
Parents and kids.
And kids.
Like, how old is Hardy?
Thirteen.
Yep, mandatory attendance, you and your son.
But it'll be good, it's, it's that.
And he says he's very frank, and that's why he wants the parents to be there. And it will let you know. I mean, he talks about suicide and penises and vaginas, you know. It's down to earth. And he says that coming from a police officer, it makes more, it gives it more gravity than just the parent saying, you know, lockout. So, yeah, I think it's a good program, and it's worthy of our attention.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tommy. Any other questions? All I will add is that the talk that Tommy was referencing on May third is being hosted by the Girdwood PTA, and that is, I believe, six P M. on May third. So if you'd like to find out more information about that, it's a tech talk night for parents. And I would visit the PTA website or everywhere they post something. Anything to add there? Move on to number two, legislative reports. Is Senator Kathy Geisel on?
Hi, yes, I am on. Thanks, I'm Brianna.
Welcome. Thank you.
I'll try to keep it short, because I know you, I guess, always have a super long meeting. We just got the budget, the operating budget today from the House. It is not fully funded, so the Senate will be working on that. Our funding, while the price of oil has gone up to the mid eighty-dollar a barrel now, we're still about two hundred to two hundred and fifty million dollars short in funding this year's budget. So the Finance Committee will be working some magic there. We are looking at future budgets being difficult to fund as well. And so we're looking at new revenue sources, which you may have heard about. One is an increase in the oil taxes, reducing the deductions that oil companies can make per barrel on the slope. Also, now putting in a tax, a tax in place, a corporate income tax for S corporations. So I know you guys know, a C corporation is a publicly traded corporation. The state of Alaska taxes those folks at nine point four percent, in fact. But our laws do not provide for taxing of S corporations. These are privately owned companies. I always describe them as lawyers' offices, physician offices, you know, the LLCs that you see. Well, Hill Corp. on the North Slope is an S corporation. It's owned by a single individual. I'm sure he has partners. But because we don't have a personal income tax in Alaska, we levy no taxes on Hill Corp. So other than, we do get, obviously, royalty, production tax from them, things like that, but no corporate income taxes. So this is, there is a bill that will propose taxing them. It won't bring in buckets of money. It'll bring in about two hundred million a year. If we do succeed with the change in the deductions on, on oil, it would bring in about a five hundred, well, three hundred to five hundred million dollars a year if we change those deductions on a barrel of oil. Other things under discussion are internet sales tax, the education head tax may be coming back soon. So why do we need more revenue? Well, one of the things that's not included in the House operating budget is the increase in funding for the base student allocation. In other words, for K twelve education. This is a priority for the Senate majority, and so we're going to be looking at how to solve that riddle, how to get the BSA increased. Right now, the base student allocation is about fifty-one hundred dollars per student. If you adjust that for inflation today, it should be about sixty-three hundred dollars for every student. So you can see, over the past about fifteen years, inflation has eaten away at our education funding. And so that's a problem. We need to make that up so that we can recruit and retain teachers. Another factor in recruitment and retention of teachers, public employees, the, the folks that plow our roads, issue permits, et cetera, is moving back to a defined benefit pension program. That's a bill, frankly, that I'm carrying. It would reinstitute the defined benefit. Right now, we have a defined contribution, and we have the data that shows when an employee is vested in the defined contribution, they then can take all the money that their employer has put into their retirement, as well as all their own money, their own contributions, and they can pull it all out and leave the state. We see that happening with our public safety folks, firefighters, policemen. We see it happening with teachers. So that's another issue that we're, we're wrestling with. The other big one we're wrestling with is the dividend. So today, in Senate Finance, a bill was introduced that would set the dividend at a twenty-five seventy-five split of the earnings. This would be a dividend of about thirteen hundred to fourteen hundred for every man, woman, and child who qualify, but it would free up about one point two billion dollars for state services, services like education, roads, public safety, et cetera. So this will be, again, an interesting discussion. The House itself is more in favor of the fifty-fifty dividend, which would be about twenty-three hundred dollars for every man, woman, and child, but would not be sustainable even into next year. So those are the things we're wrestling with. Not a lot of fun reports, but I'll stop there, because I know you've got a lot more work to do tonight. Thanks.
Thank you, Senator Geisel. I have a quick question, and before I ask anyone else too, but the, the bill you said that you are working on specifically, what's the number of that one?
It's Senate Bill eighty-eight.
Eighty-eight, okay. Thank you. Any other questions from the board? We have two online, and I didn't see who was first, but Jerry, you have one. So go ahead, Jerry.
Okay, this is Jerry. Hi, Kathy. Thank you for your service. I work doing volunteer work, doing taxes for low individual, low-income individuals and seniors. And one of the things that we find is that, you know, any child that has under-earned income over twelve hundred dollars has to file an income tax or file it as part of the parent's tax. If somehow that portion of the permanent fund, like this year, a six hundred and sixty-five dollars was an energy rebate credit, if somehow the portion over twelve hundred dollars could be non-taxable or the whole thing non-taxable, it would be a lot simpler for us. But the big thing is, it'd be a lot simpler for low-income and the people through Alaska that are having to file taxes for their children. And, you know, the children are one, two years old, and they have to pay a hundred dollars in tax, which doesn't quite make sense. So just think about how you could maybe use portion of it to be an energy rebate credit like this year or something. It would be great. And then just as a follow-up comment to the permanent fund, I know you're not supportive, but I'm supportive of a state income tax, you know, taking money out of the permanent fund and, and using it for state government as the most progressive tax we could have. But I know that's probably a nonstarter. So thank you.
Well, actually, Jerry, I'm evolving to seeing the need for a personal income tax. Our majority caucus in the Senate is not, we don't have the votes for that, but I'll tell you, I'm one of the people that is evolving to that point. We're simply running out of money. One thing I didn't mention is that the permanent fund is not going to be spinning out the earnings that it has been for the past few years. That's about four billion dollars a year. That's going to drop in half next year. Anyway, question number two.
Go ahead, Sorin.
Yeah, Senator Geisel, this is Sorin Worth, and I, as a teacher of nearly two decades in the school district, I really want to thank you for your advocacy for Senate Bill eighty-eight. You know, working in the classroom every day, our classrooms are completely overcrowded. And we have teachers leaving the profession by, we have so many elementary positions open, middle and high school this year. We're having a hard time filling. And we're going, we're having to do double duty, and I know you know all of this. So I just want to say thank you for your support on this education bill, and we're hearing it loud and clear as teachers and educators, and I think our community and our parents. So we're, we're behind you.
Thanks for that, Sorin. And, you know, we are losing population in Alaska, and that is often due to the, the education challenges that we have. When education suffers, the whole economy suffers. We've got to fix this.
Thank you. I don't see any other hands and any in the room, Senator Geisel. So thank you for your time today.
Thank you.
Is Ladi Shaw on there?
Let's see him.
Okay, so next on the agenda is Assembly Members. Is Randy Salt or Suzanne here?
I don't see them, but I'll look for them. They sometimes come in later.
Thank you, Kyle. And then Mayor's Office. Hey, Andy Hallman, you're up. Welcome.
Thank you very much. I want to thank Senator Geisel. She did a lot of what I would report on, although it's not, not all of it, school board business, but really do appreciate her work on the, both the retirement issue and on the funding issue. Both are having a critical effect, and I'll just second what she said. We've had an unusually high number of teachers leave during this year, which used to be really rare. And it's a combination of things. It's not one thing by any means. But we also have a very high number of people that have turned in their paperwork to retire at the end of the year. Recruitment is going to be tough, and it's, it's going to be tough all over Alaska. It's going to be tough all over the country. So it's a kind of a perfect storm. Backing up, the main issue, I think, may be of interest to Girdwood. One, still waiting to hear about use of the Girdwood School Building when the rest of Anchorage is closed. I suspect that's going around to every department for, like, review and consideration, including transportation, security. And in some cases, there may be no issue, but I know they'll still check with each department to think about that. And of course, considering what happens if you have some students that show up and some students that don't. It's, I know it seems pretty simple on the face of it, and it may be, but it may also be quite a bit complex, but I'll, we'll bring you whatever news I get as soon as we get it. School start times are going to be looked at again, and that's something a lot of you may want to weigh in on. And I'm going to refer you to the website, ASDK12.org. Click on Hot Topics, and it will take you to the presentations that have been made. It'll take you to all the combinations we will be looking at, which there's probably about a dozen. The feeling is, we, we won't really change the outcomes unless we swap elementary and high school. And the, the research shows that elementary kids start off energetic, and they fade in the afternoon. And that high school kids start off faded and build up energy as the day progresses. And of course, our start times right now are the opposite of that. We, we start our elementary kids late and run them late. We start our high school kids early and release them early. This one, you know, primarily, I, I think will come down to what the community indicates. If, if people do want to change, and they do feel like it'll make a difference, that's what we want to do. If it's, if it's going to cause issues for so many people, we'll try to look at minimizing that. So I would urge people that are affected by it to go to the website and either email the board. I think there's a way for input and a survey at the website, but, but do please pay attention on that one. The legislative issues, funding is a big one. They're continuing, they, they've continued to hold hearings on the Governor's Bill about parental rights. And of course, the defined benefit bill is in there. Again, if you have feelings, I would urge you to contact your legislators. Senator Geisel expressed her position. If you support it, I would, I would suggest an email just so she knows that you support it. If you don't support it, she'd want to hear that too. And also Representative Shaw would need to hear your opinions on it also. So I think that's everything I have, and happy to answer questions if anyone has any.
Thank you, Andy Hallman. Are there any questions from the board? Anyone online or in the room with questions? I have a quick question. The, what's the timing on the decision for the start times?
Nothing's going to happen this fall, and I don't know exact, I don't know that we've picked a time for a vote. I think some of it will depend on what kind of feedback we get, and if there's a lot, we're not in a big rush on it. We, we want to get it right rather than quickly, but we already think it's too late to do anything for fall. So we would be talking about the start of school in twenty-four, twenty-five at the earliest. So we've got a lot of time on this. It's not scheduled for a vote anytime right away.
Okay, thank you very much for your time and addressing the topic on number five, so.
Thank all of you.
Thank you. If there's nothing else, we'll go to, no one else came on, Kyle, Supervisor Reports. Let's start with in the room. Mike, would you start?
Yeah, I think we, I'll just mention something that happened at the last Land Use meeting. Most of the agenda items are actually on our agenda tonight. One thing of significance is Land Use adopted a land acknowledgement at the beginning of the meeting, and I would urge us to, Bonnie, to maybe in a future meeting, consider doing the same for GBOS.
Mike, Guy, do you have a report?
No, I think, yeah, there are some agenda items later on, and Chief Weston will be here to speak during them.
Okay, thank you. Jennifer, have one?
I don't have many updates.
Okay. Amanda, do you have any updates?
Just to say that tomorrow evening, the Public Safety Advisory Committee is going to Whittier's Community Council meeting to do a commemorative event. Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda. For my report, I do not have anything other than what's on the agenda, I believe, or in our report. So go with our service provider reports. Chief Weston, please come forward this morning.
Happy endless, endless winter, or maybe meltdown. Hey, I just wanted to mention, there was a post on social media yesterday, I believe, that talked about people being roofied in the community. We have not responded recently on any roofie events, but we have responded for EMS for those. And it was mentioned that we had actually drug test kits for that. We actually don't at this time. We were given eight fentanyl kits. This is one of them. That's all we have at the moment. And this is for the issue that you're seeing in Massu, where people who are getting mass, who are mass users, are having fentanyl-based mass, and there's been at least six overdose deaths in the last couple of weeks. So this is one of the things you can use to test for those. We only have eight at the moment. But, and then I've given the rest of my Narcan kits that I have to patrol for the weekend. So I'm going to try and get some more of those in right now. With the fentanyl, if you do have a loved one or family member that's a user, a lover or friend, with the fentanyl in the mass, it is taking at least two of the Narcan doses to get it out of it versus one. So, so know that it's, it's quite very important, and usually you'll have to do that. I just want to give that sort of public service awareness level. And then for us, today's really an exciting day right now over there. I don't know if you can feel the stress level, but there's eight people writing their EMT-one test. There are mixed alias resort employees and Girdwood Fire members, and this is their last thing they have to do. Oh, get closer to the mic.
It's exciting news, so.
Yeah, I make sure. So, so anyway, they're writing their test as we speak, and they've already done their practicals. So as soon as they pass their test tonight, and they'll know instantaneously, we'll have eight new EMT-ones in the community. So happy about that. We did, we just finished forty-eight hours of extrication training on our new extrication tools. So we are very excited about that. And then the second phase, which was the grant that AK Legislature gave us, Alaska Legislature gave us, is also due to arrive. It's on the barge right now. Hopefully, it doesn't sink. It's due to arrive, hopefully, within the week. And so next Tuesday, it's weird again.
If you stand over there and talk loud, it'll be good.
Okay. And then by, by, on next Tuesday, we'll have a press conference to thank everybody for those tools. Hopefully, they arrive in time. And so our DOT grant gave us a hundred and twelve thousand dollars worth of extrication tools. This AK Legislature grant gives us another three hundred and twelve thousand dollars in tools that are spread from us all the way down to Homer. And so we've really raised the bar with this four hundred thousand dollars worth of extrication tools on getting everybody up to speed on having current extrication tools on the highway. We still have about a hundred thousand dollars worth of needs between all the, ourselves and the other eleven departments south of us, but we're so much farther ahead than we were last year. So super happy about that, so that. And then, obviously, going into this month, I was pretty freaked out looking at the cruise ship schedule, knowing how many people are transiting through the service area and knowing that in June, it looked like six days a week, we're going to have people moving through the service area, which for us translates into customers. But I'm happy to say that we have been able to staff up, and I am looking at really good staffing for summer. We've managed to convince some of the couple people to leave their normal jobs to come work for us and who are existing members, and so that's also good. So, yeah, so feeling this moment, pretty good about things for that. You know, might say, are we going to have a fire season this year? Possibly. Really, even though it looks like we got lots of snowpack, you really can't tell at this point. And so if you look at talking to the people that predict these things, we still might have high fire danger for forest fire and things like that. So everybody should just know that even though it looks like we're in endless winter, maybe in a couple of weeks, we might suddenly be in breakup, so, or a real breakup. So, yeah, any questions for me?
Chief, I got, I got one about Narcan. So like an EpiPen, typically you want to go to the doctor after you have, like, a chock and use an EpiPen. Is Narcan the same?
Yes.
So it'll just get you over the hump?
Narcan, stick it up the nose, right? We've got some, if you want to see what. Narcan, stick it up the nose, right? Um, we've got some, if you want to see what one looks like, I have, if I have to say shake one, so you can sort of see what it looks like. Um, goes up your nose. Um, at all the AEDs we have in the community, I try and also put Narcan kits there. Uh, and so, uh, with that, uh, squirt it up the nose, know that it's going to wear off. So you still need to call nine-one-one. It's going to get them out in the respiratory depression, but you still might, they may still go back into it. So, but the good thing to know is if it's hit, you know, you need to use more than you normally would. So use both of them. But then you need to call us because, you know, a little while, they're going to go back down again. So they still need to be transported. Um, it's, you know, but you might have saved their life, which is huge.
Any questions? Don't see any questions online either, Chief Weston. So thank you very much for your report. Uh, okay. Kyle, uh, please, Chief O'Shea is on the line. I see. Welcome, Chief O'Shea.
Uh, thank you. Uh, just a quick recap. Uh, after the last, uh, GPOS's, uh, Public Safety Advisory Commission meeting, um, they were talking about some traffic issues and stuff like that. So we, uh, increased our tra, a little bit of our traffic enforcement in the Girdwood area. Uh, the other next event coming up is a slush cup. Uh, during the slush cup time, we're going to have, we've increased staffing based, pretty much all our officers are going to be working that weekend. So there can be anywhere from, uh, two to four officers on duty at any given time, uh, in the, uh, Girdwood proper area. Additionally, I actually chatted with APD earlier today. They're going to be actually increasing their traffic enforcement and, uh, on the Seward Highway, uh, during that weekend. As well as I was advised that, uh, currently, I guess, uh, they're going to be sending a couple of officers into Aliaska Resort area. Uh, they were asked for a separate contract to, uh, do some traffic control for the Aliaska. Uh, they asked, just wanted to know what our opinion, we had no opinion of it. It's great to have extra officers in that area, but that's going to be a separate contract between Aliaska Resort and APD. Other than that, uh, for this, uh, slush cup weekend, we're looking forward to that. Like I said, we're going to have, uh, extra officers on duty, uh, during the whole weekend. So we'll have a total of, uh, six officers for that weekend in Girdwood. Uh, that, if anyone has any questions, feel free to ask. And, uh, I also just for Chief Weston, uh, if you want, I, we probably have a couple of extra Narcan kits. If you'd like, we could go drop off at the fire station, uh, if, if your personnel needs it for your, uh, on-duty personnel for, uh, the weekend.
Uh, Chief, it's Michelle. Um, no, we're probably okay. We've got our own Narcan. I just, you know, I'm just trying to push it out into the community of places that I think that it needs to be. So.
Okay.
Thank you.
No problem. And we're also looking forward tomorrow night, uh, at the Whittier City Council. Uh, Girdwood Board of Supervisors, Public Safety Advisory Committee will be on attendance for the ceremonial signing of our Girdwood contract. Uh, during that time, we'll take them, uh, take them to a quick tour of our facility here in Whittier and answer any questions they may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief O'Shea. Are there any questions from the board or members of the public? Thank you for being here and all of your service. Hey, it looks like Parks and Rec, Kyle and Rhodes, Rhodes first.
Sure. Um, yep. Well, last week we thought we were still in winter and this week it looks like, uh, spring has taken hold. So, uh, we're actively, uh, getting ready for that and dealing with what melts out. Uh, but, uh, we are still grooming Nordic trails. Our volunteer crew out there through the growing Nordic, uh, uh, ski group have done a great job of, uh, trying to keep up with it. Um, probably only, uh, maybe a week or more left of grooming before the snowpack really starts to fall apart and becomes too hard to do that. Uh, but we really want to thank our volunteers who have put a ton of time in there. And also huge thanks to Shane Bullen, who's been our expert on mechanic. Um, and done not all volunteer time for, for the club and for the park, keeping machines running really well. So, uh, that's worked out really good. Uh, we are definitely shifting gears towards summer, um, and preparing for projects and things along those lines. And one of the main things that we're focusing right now is interviewing two, um, uh, C-zone positions. And so we've had, um, uh, a few interviews so far, but we're still seeking applicants for those positions. Um, and they're basically forty-hour week positions. We do shifts, either four tens or four or five eights. And, um, it, it goes from May through September, uh, in that aspect. But we are flexible with people's schedules, understanding that we do sometimes have people who are still in school and need to leave early. So, so open to that. And our camp ground hosts are set for this, uh, this year, Kara and Jared, uh, they'll be staying there and, uh, uh, doing the work for us out there. Um, working through several projects, I said, like I said, working on map project, uh, memorial benches. Um, and then, uh, we had a huge fundraising effort from, um, for the baseball field. And seventeen thousand dollars was raised. Um, and, uh, we are applying that towards doing improvements to the field this year, trying to really improve that and make that a better surface for playing on, and then also working on a batting cage. Um, so, uh, we'll be working on those improvements over the coming weeks. But we thank everybody who volunteered for that effort and raised those funds for the Slaton Bowl, uh, Memorial Field out there, uh, which is really great. Um, we are currently also planning for trail projects. Uh, we're working with Alaska Trails to have them here for a total of three weeks. Uh, there'll be actually three different crews that come through and, uh, they're going to be working on projects for the Lower Ditterod and the middle, excuse me, the Lower Beaver Pond and the middle of Ditterod, um, and getting quite a bit of work done there. Uh, so we'll be doing that. And then once we do get our full-time summer crew, they'll be working on trail projects through that. As well, GTC is working up volunteer efforts for each month for GTC, uh, Guru Trails Committee volunteers to go out and do brushing and, uh, evening projects. So we'll be starting those in June. Um, probably have one or two in June and probably one or two in July, um, outside of the Forest Fair and Fourth of July holidays. Uh, so we're working through that. So, and then we're also updating a new trail map, um, that we'll be using. Our trail maps that we have are probably close to fifteen or eighteen years old. And, uh, so we're updating those and, uh, and we have a committee that we'll be meeting this Wednesday with that committee about that trail map. Program. And then the Guru Trails Plan, uh, is moving along, what we call the Blue Candidate Draft. Um, and we'll be going before HLB, the Heritage Land Bank Advisory Committee, um, at the end of the month and seeking a letter of support from them. And then we'll start the process with planning to go through, Pete, planning and zoning for approval and to get that planning adopted. So, uh, working through that, we'll be making a presentation to, uh, the Advisory Commission, uh, at the end of the month there, as I said. Um, as always, Margaret does a great job of keeping our, um, website and, and information up to date. So if you're looking for information, you can try there. Otherwise, give us a call. We'll help you find it. And then lastly, the hand tram, uh, replacement with the new suspension bridge. Uh, we're all ready to go and get started with the design. Supposedly the assembly is reviewing it tomorrow and hopefully we'll approve it. And then we will be able to get started. So we've just been held up with these purchasing requirements and assembly approvals, the new ones, um, for over a month and a half. And hopefully tomorrow's the last hurdle and we can get going on that and have a design done by the fall. And we're also working with the Forest Service closely on the approach to, um, um, construction. We may do it through, uh, the missile process, which has been our plan, or we may work with the National Forest Foundation to have them lead it, um, and figure that out. Just matter how we can funnel the money to the different, um, organizers doing it. The National, um, Forest Foundation does several projects and they've done several bridge projects. Um, and they're more streamlined, so it may be a good approach for us to go that direction. So, so we're working that out. Um, switching gears over to, uh, streets. Um, yes, the last two weeks really played sort of havoc on us with going from thaw back to stow, then we get a foot and a half and then we're back to thaw. Um, but the road crew has been out there steadily trying to keep up with the peel. As the ice layers built, uh, melt out, they're trying to peel it off today. They work heavily on airport side and up, uh, near the resort, really also preparing roads to widen them because we know there'll be an impact of a slush cup. Um, so they're, they're repairing those areas. And then they got over the timber line today and tried to hit the hardest areas. They'll be back over there tomorrow and we just, as the dirt gets exposed, the potholes come out and we try to get the water going in the right direction. Um, and you have to do it when it's thawed. So this is, it's just the process. So we just ask people to be patient as we go through breakup. We're in the midst of it right now, but things will get better. And, uh, they'll continue to work on it as, as, uh, conditions allow. Um, major project, uh, looks like, uh, we are prepared to move forward this summer on one of the three fish culverts. Um, and I'll be talking with GPOS in more detail about this at our, um, work session, um, about the year interview, uh, and more details to share. But I think we have the funding to get those done. They've been sitting on the shelf waiting to go for quite a while. And I feel this is the year that we can get one of them done with Western. Western's proved that they can do, uh, fish culverts very well and they've given us a, uh, quote that's, uh, right within what the engineer estimate is. So then we're going to push forward and try to get that one done this summer. And that will be the one at Lake Tahoe, which drains Moose Meadows. Um, that is a complicated one because we have to lower the water line, um, because the new culvert going in, the fish, fish, meat, fish specs has to be deeper. And so, um, that just makes it more expensive, but it is what it is. And, uh, we've designed for it and we're ready to go to get it done. So, uh, so we'll be working on that, uh, this year. We'll talk more about that at our work session. Um, as for expenses, uh, we're right within where we should be at this time of year. Eleven percent so far spent for road expenditures. That's because we have invoices that haven't been paid yet from March. And then, um, our parts are right within it. We're always, uh, low on our expenditures this time of year. We start spending, uh, quite a bit for our budget once we get into summer. And then, uh, police and fire are right where they need to be. So overall, the budgets for twenty-three, uh, look, are looking good. So nothing unusual to report this time. I'll take any questions if anybody has any.
Thank you, Kyle. And then Jennifer.
Uh, Kyle, just real quickly, the, um, that grant for the rehab of the Aralberg bike path, that something like that be a possibility for the issues that we're having along, um, Aliaska Highway? Or is because that's DOT's mess, that's a different thing?
It's a different thing. So we're not an owner of that, so we can apply for it. DOT could have applied for it. I think we encouraged them to apply for it, but it wasn't a priority for them. Okay. So, so yes, that's why we, we focused on the Alberg path.
Right. Good.
Any other questions from the board or members of the public? Hey, thank you, Brad. Oh, yes, Mike.
One small thing. I think the, um, I think we discovered that the, um, the money transfer for the hand tram placement bridge, uh, won't be in tomorrow's meeting, but it'll be following, because we're meeting on the twenty-fifth of May.
Yes.
Oh, I didn't hear that.
It's not on the agenda.
We couldn't see on the agenda, but it looks like it's going to be introduced. Okay.
Suzanne confirmed it's suggested for the twenty-fifth.
Gotcha. We will, uh, discuss that tomorrow.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep. Mike, okay. Moving on to public comment. Persons offering public comment. Let's state their full name and address. Public comment is limited to three minutes and, um, not on subjects on the agenda. So anyone here for public comment tonight? Please come forward to the microphone that's right here. Okay.
Perfect. So, um, my name is Linda, uh, Mancoff. I'm with the Girdwood Health Clinic. And so I'm here just to inform the community about Medicaid unwinding. It's a nationwide event that is, uh, started the first of April. It's going to affect a lot of low-income people who have that coverage. And so, uh, first of all, what is Medicaid? Medicaid is a federal, uh, program which is administered by the state for, uh, its healthcare for low-income people who meet the eligibility requirements. So, um, Medicaid enrollment increased at the onset of the pandemic. And for many reasons, due to loss of work, less hours, and of course illness. Um, and due to the public health emergency, Medicaid provided a continuous enrollment process, which meant that there would be no interruption for people's coverage during that, uh, public health emergency. Um, but the public health emergency ended March thirty-first. And so on April first, the, uh, Medicaid started to unwind. What that means is that every individual that's on, uh, Medicaid is going to be reviewed and, um, considered if they are still eligible. So, um, the Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services require every state to be prepared for this. And the way they're doing that is to partner with the clinics and other organizations like 211 and, um, to help people, um, address that renewal process. And if they're not eligible to have other, um, insurance coverage for them, like the marketplace or sliding fee discount programs and stuff like that. Um, at any rate, so it's very important for these recipients to be updated with the Department of Public Assistance with their information because it begins with notice that they are, need to be reviewed. It's going to be happening over the course of a year. So when someone receives that notice to be reviewed, it's very time-sensitive. So we encourage people to contact the Department of Public Assistance. And I'll give that phone number in just a moment to make sure that their contact information is up to date. We suspect a lot of people will most likely lose coverage because they simply cannot be contacted. Um, or, you know, there's always language barriers. And for those who are homeless, who are most often on Medicaid. Um, the estimate nationwide for people to lose coverage is between five and fourteen million people who will not be able to, um, be covered and not be able to transition to another coverage. Um, the number of people without health insurance could increase if people lose that coverage. And the people who were covered dropped. Um, we were at a record low of eight point six percent of people who were uncovered in twenty-twenty-one, which is due to the pandemic, which, um, was only matching the historic low in two thousand and sixteen, which of course was the Affordable Healthcare Act and the expansion of Medicaid. What is the Girdwood Health Clinic doing? We are, uh, raising awareness through outreach, informing, educating, educating patients on the renewal process, assisting patients who lose their coverage with other, uh, coverage. Now, we're also assisting them if there's appeals because if they lose their coverage and they shouldn't have, we're going to appeal on their behalf. So the number to call the Department of Public Assistance, one eight hundred four seven eight seven 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 eight. That is a number that no matter where you are in the state of Alaska, that's the number to call. Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you very much for being here and making that. All right. Uh, next online, Crystal Hope.
Hi, everybody. Uh, Crystal Hope, eleven thirty-four. I would just wanted to, um, give an update. I, I apologize. I missed Senator Geisel's update. So I'm not sure if this get it, um, got addressed already, but, uh, this is in regards to the Little Bears, um, replacement new facility. Uh, we did submit a, um, a grant request through, uh, the state of Alaska to the Community Innovation Grant, which was specific, specific to childcare. Um, the, it, it excluded, uh, new construction. So, uh, our request involved, but planning was allowed. So our, our request included, um, the costs for architectural and engineering and, um, planning, uh, you know, costs associated with the planning department. So, um, anyways, we did receive, uh, letters of support from Four Valleys Community School, Girdwood Rotary, um, uh, Girdwood Lions Club, um, and then Little Bears, of course. Um, and, uh, also Palmero, uh, Lodging, uh, provided one as well. So we provided five letters of support from various community organizations that, um, were submitted last Friday. So we are hopeful, uh, we'll see some of the funds. They've got nine and a half million statewide, uh, for that grant. Um, so I just wanted to give a follow-up and we're working hard to, um, get all the funding we need to complete the project. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your update. Are there any other public comments this evening? I saw that, Amanda, but I do not.
Here's Eric.
Oh, Eric?
Yeah, um, my, my name's Eric Flora and, uh, I, I work for Alaska Pacific University. And I've been, uh, operating the Cross Country Ski Training Center on Eagle Glacier, um, for the last seventeen years. And I wanted to, uh, just come on tonight and share that, um, we're going to be doing some construction up there this summer. Uh, the building's been up there for about thirty-seven years and, and, uh, it was damaged in the earthquake in two thousand and nineteen. And so with, with the help of the state of Alaska and FEMA, we're going to be doing some projects up there to kind of put the building into a, a good operational place and safety. And, um, if, for those that, that, uh, that aren't familiar with the center, it's, it's the, um, Cross Country Ski Center that, you know, we work with the Cross Country Skiers, that the ones that show up on, on the Olympics and World Cup list.
Thank you very much, Eric, for the announcement and being here. Which month does that begin?
Uh, that should be, um, starting, the, the work will be starting in June. And, uh, our, our goal is to work through the summer and have things buttoned up as winter starts.
Thank you. Okay, any other public comments tonight? He's hearing, seeing none. We'll go on to first item of old business, which. I don't think. Number five, uh, we already, I'm addressed by Andy Hallman. And I'll move to number six. Update on current status of Aliaska Highway Interchange Project. Road supervisor.
I don't.
I don't have an update on that. I have not heard back from DOT.
Okay. Any question?
Should we table that until we hear an update on that, or you want to keep it on there?
No, let's table it, I'll let you know if I have anything.
Yeah, I'll let you know too.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Number seven, update on Holden Hills questions, land use supervisor, I could read the whole thing or?
Let's uh, start with first one. So um, we might combine a couple, but start with the first one. Um, yeah, so uh, we had a uh, letter drafted in the, in the packet here, page two, um, which has at least one typo in it, I realize, probably meant. Um, and I think that's, that's a kind of starting point for some specific questions to uh, Dr. Wilder with an E, or you. Um, so what this covers is, well, I can find, I'll read it, I'll let you read it. I'll summarize it. Um, so after the decision to definitely postpone the action on the Holden Hills land disposal um, and comments from uh, Lance Wilder at the H L B Advisory Commission these March, um, there's still a number of questions and clarifications we're looking. We have a meeting scheduled next Monday, um, on April twenty-four, uh, with the Ting Municipal Manager, I think, still. So it's being confirmed. Um, so what we want to do basically is send him this letter to prepare the questions and hopefully can bring answers to that meeting and then we'll, we'll have a live discussion during that meeting. Um, so the, the first one is about the status of the development agreement. What's the actual status now? Um, what's their intent for it? Um, they intend to keep it active, do they intend to actually do more land disposal, et cetera, et cetera? So that's really a question of, what, what is the intention of the project and the Holden Hills project as it stands now? What can they do, what are they going, what are they likely to do? Um, what the status is of the previous contracts with C Y Investments and Dow for activities around the Holden Hill project? Uh, they still active, how much money has been spent, et cetera? Um, the status of the replating action and the plating action, uh, for those original three H L B tracks. Um, I've been told that it takes about uh, six months to a year to do the sectional leasement um, vacation. Um, and uh, obviously we're not that far into the process, so uh, again, we can, we want to find out what's going on there. Um, what the status of is of any other work related to um, the original R F P by Palmero? So we've heard about this bifurcation, but it's not clear what it's formal or informal. So we want to get an update on that, what actually happened, whether there's any documentation around it. Um, and uh, in particular, um, if there's been any work on Aliaska Village from H L B side. So they're the main questions. And then the few specific requests um, are uh, getting a, getting basically an unredacted original R F P. Uh, a lot of the material redacted has been released in other forms, we're going to get the original one, including that. Um, and uh, and also a termination of the development agreement to remove any uncertainty about use of that land for other projects.
Thank you, Mike, for going through the letter and for your work on this and for you, I believe, so. I don't have any suggested edits and I heard your first one was just spelling.
Yeah, that, Lance Wilder's last name is W I L B E R. I think you are on top of it, fixed.
Yeah. There, any comments from the board? Start with Jennifer or Amanda.
You answered Amanda's.
No, I saw you. I think you're.
Okay, all right, all right. Um, I didn't catch this earlier. On the um, second politically, when it talks about the, when you're talking about the funds that have been made to the contractors or what funds, blah, blah. I, I, I think that is one of the interesting questions, but uh, I think we might want to elaborate on that. And the other one is that out of whatever funds have been spent, what have we received for that amount? What is the scope of the work for off-site improvements and estimated cost? So in other words, if we've spent public money on something, what is our public product that gotten out of it?
Right. Yeah, what am I to, some additional comment?
Yes.
What have we, what have these, what's been spent, it's been received?
Yes. Uh, I'm sorry, I didn't catch that earlier, so, yeah.
So that bullet point, first statement, but then it's um,
Yeah.
followed with the question that will then be. Be made.
Right.
Two-part question or?
Yeah.
Or two separate?
I'm going to suggest a change. So what services have been provided by the contractors and um, funds expended to or invoiced or made anticipated to be paid? So what services have been provided by and funds have been expended under?
Services provided by and.
Yeah, what services have been provided by those contractors and funds expended, funds expended in ways or anticipated paid?
And any results of documentation?
Yes.
Okay, um, while that gets written out by one of you, Amanda, your hands up.
Thank you. I just think that they, I think I heard that they uh, announced that the uh, city manager is not, no longer acting, um, but is now officially the manager. Correct me if I'm wrong, but that, it says at the document.
And I think it's stick with acting, because he will not, he's still acting until he's confirmed by the assembly.
Okay.
Thank you, Amanda. Any other comments, suggestions?
Um, this is, so the intent is to send this to um, to the director after this meeting. And then we'll start with these questions. You may still have questions, or we may have answers that are provided for the um, the meeting next month. But uh, this is kind of a pre-warning, really.
Anything else from the board? Okay. Uh, one hand is that before we go to the, because item number seven does have, have more sections to it? So, do you have a question on the letter or a comment?
Uh, yeah, I'm not sure, this might come in the following um, section, I can't see it. Um, but uh, is um, would this be the time to ask about the uh, Crow Creek area plan? And I'm just wondering what's going to happen with that, if it's been updated, if there's a plan to update that or?
It's on number eight.
Oh, that's, okay, thank you.
So hang, type the number eight. Uh, Grace, do you have one for number seven?
I do. Um, I think the, the language you're asking for or seeking is that you need to be asking what the scope of the um, sole source contract was, was uh, was asked of. And what is the deliverable been at this moment? Because we have two sole source contracts, one done in December twenty-first of two thousand twenty-one and the second done in March of two thousand twenty-two to two different parties, but with the oversight of C Y Investment under the pretext of Holden Hills.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you for your comments.
I think what I do there is to just provide the um, I think the scope is actually under the um, the original. So um, or A R S, I can't remember A R S, I think. Um, I can provide those references, just add that into the language.
Okay.
So by previous sole source contracts, we'll just put the two references.
Anything else on this one, the letter? Right.
Um, I'll just comment on the, one thing this does not cover um, directly is the, the issue about sewer line. Um, that I think is another question for the municipal manager, but not necessarily to Lance, because I think that comes under A W O. So that's still a topic for our meeting, but it's not necessarily under the scope of this letter, just in case anyone was wondering why that was missing.
Okay.
And let's um, know if we have to vote, but there's a motion, I'm just gonna um, with the, I think, the amendments to the spelling of Director Wilder's name and the second bullet point, um, a move that we send this letter. That's written and while as amended.
Thank you, we have a motion to submit this letter as amended, do we have a second?
I'll ask it.
Okay, thank you, Jennifer and Amanda. Do we have any further discussion? Okay, uh, hearing no further discussion, Kyle, could you do a roll call?
Sure. Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Mike Edgerton?
Yes.
Guy Wade?
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard?
Yes.
Amanda Sassy?
Yes.
Motion passes, five to zero.
Thank you. Back to you, Mike, for the next.
Yeah, so I think the thing that was missing here was the sewer line. Um, what I proposed there is we uh, we just have that as a specific question we asked at the meeting and that we request, I don't know, you know, when we, when we come to the discussion later, we'll just put A W O as a specific point. And then whether um, it's up to the manager, wants to call someone from A W O. Just on trip, so.
Okay.
Okay. Great. And then. Next part of number seven, what was the like? Nothing. Going to number eight? Okay. Agenda item L U C twenty-three zero three dash zero six, L U C recommendation for T B S letter request to H L B and Assembly to abandon the unusable the two thousand six Crow Creek neighborhood land use plan as the use as create a master plan for development and request an update to the C C N L U P following completion of the Girdwood Area slash comprehensive plan. So we already touched on number seven and number eight is just this one that's in front of us now also, so.
Yes, it's in form for resolution or the letter. So we had a, in our last resolution on Holden Hill, we specifically mentioned um, the Crow Creek neighborhood land use plan, um, that we would, it was a, I can't remember the exact, and I had it before. So it's front of you. Um, we mentioned it and uh, kind of objected to the, to the use of it as a, as both a neighborhood plan and a area master plan. Uh, this resolution is a little bit more detailed, um, in the problems of using them in both capacities. Um, and then also is more general that uh, any, nothing should be, basically what we're saying here is none of them, no plans, no active quality good, should be used for both. They're, they're either one or the other, need to be determined to be one or the other. Um, and uh, and then we specifically uh, call out, um, we call out some specific problems with uh, the situation using both it. So I could go through this or I could let people read it and answer any particular questions. One thing um, that uh, we realized, good suggestion by Jennifer was uh, some language we've changed in the last whereas. We're just putting unanimously in there for land use. Normally what we do is record in the land use action proceeded this, that generated this uh, uh, this particular resolution, in this case, there was a unanimous word.
Thank you, Mike, and all of us did have uh, hopefully opportunity to read through this. So if anyone needs more time, that's fine to do that now, I think. Jennifer, go ahead, if you have some things.
You know, I want to see if we could discuss as a board, just making sure that this letter does match the intent of the L U C vote. Um, because again, I think I might have missed that, we're missing a little something. And in particular, it's the part where it says requesting an update to C C and L U P following the completion of the. I don't think we have that in there, so.
Uh, which, where, what number whereas is that?
Oh, sorry, so I'm looking at, under agenda nine, I have a number eight, where it says, this is what the L U C recommendation was. Uh, part of that recommendation says we're requesting an update to Crow Creek neighborhood land use plan. And I don't know if we, I think we might have accidentally missed that in the letter. So did we get it?
I didn't.
Oh.
By reading, I thought it was addressed.
Oh, there we go, yes, sorry, missed it.
But I thought it was reading really slowly, it's very clear.
Got it, I missed it, sorry.
For us.
So it is a, the final whereas.
Yeah.
Okay. To. Eighth whereas. And.
Um, there's two, two sections in square brackets. Um, that was actually because I think when I sent it, I wasn't a hundred percent sure. The first one is in the two, three, four, fifth whereas, I couldn't remember if it was two thousand eleven the sewer line was put in. So that's just a fact check. If it was two thousand eleven, let's just remove the brackets and let's just correct it to have the right date in there. Certainly by one.
The next bracket?
Um, and I, this, this language I just didn't like, but uh, I don't know if anyone has a better suggestion. I think it works without that square bracket.
Yeah, it's just.
Right.
I'd say strike it, yeah, yes, let's do that. So my amendment then is to um, well, I guess we should first of all move, first of all, I will move this resolution.
Okay, the resolution has been moved, do we have a second?
Both.
Jennifer, second, okay?
And then um, I would like to uh, move an amendment that we, if we can confirm it was two thousand eleven, we just removed the square brackets in the fifth whereas. Uh, if it's not two thousand eleven, we fix the right date. And we remove the uh, section in square brackets in the first, in the second, sorry, in the first resolve, in the first step.
All right. Do we have a second on the amendments? So Jennifer, seconds, any further discussion on those amendments? Okay, we have a roll call for those amendments.
Amendments, yes, uh, Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Uh, Mike Edgerton?
Yes.
Guy Wade?
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard?
Yes.
Amanda Sassy?
Yes.
Uh, that amendment's passed by you.
Right, any other suggestions or amendments to the resolution? Okay, hearing seeing none, uh, we can go back to the original motion. Any further discussion on this? Thank you very much for your work on it. Um, so we had a second on this, we do a roll call as well, prove this.
Sure. Uh, Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Mike Edgerton?
Yes.
Guy Wade?
Yes.
Jennifer Wingard?
Yes.
Amanda Sassy?
Yes.
That resolution as amended passes.
Everyone. Yes, that completes number eight. Right, number nine, agenda item L U C twenty-three zero three dash zero seven. L U C recommendation told a formal strategic planning facilitated workshop to set goals for a formal subcommittee to address long-term housing.
So, I'll start this. I think the. Why I see, I see this kind of situation a little bit differently, I think, to the way you just discussed it. So I'm going to describe how I see it and then we can discuss what we should do after. So how I see it is we have um, for housing, we have kind of four different things, four different strands, word strands, to um, to consider at the moment. Uh, one of them is kind of what's our long-term vision. And that's actually being worked up, that's being worked and we already have a draft for it under the um, the Girdwood Area Plan. So the things, the three things we still have to look at are, um, we have this kind of high-level goals coming from the area plan. Um, and then turning that into things which can actually be done, implementation is a kind of technical project, it's a planning project. Um, and that piece of work in most other communities, they call it Housing Implementation Plan, something or Housing Action Plan. Um, but it's basically going from the ideas to a set of things that actually, you know, make difference on the ground. So um, changes in codes, policies, if, you know, creating different entities, whatever it might be. There's a, there's a set of actually act, of actions, a plan for a set of actions which came there. And that's kind of a three to five-year, well, I mean, not, to put plant again, is probably a one-year project. But you know, the intent is that has, that, you know, that will have a big effect in the sort of three to five-year timescale. We have two other things which are shorter term. Um, one of those is uh, this opportunity that's pretty much ahead of us now of H L B is trying, is identifying land that could be used for um, affordable, sustainable housing um, in the relatively short term. By short term, I mean, you know, maybe this could be two years, um, two or three years. Um, so I think we need, we need some, we need to focus on that. And the other thing we really need, it's not discussed as much, but the other thing we also need focus on is even shorter term than that. Is there anything we can do right now? Are there any things we can do to either change code immediately or, or some sort of, you know, exclusions around code, land use code or something else to find temporary housing we can, can be used for um, workforce in, you know, next winter? And definitely next summer. So are there things we can do in the six to twelve-month timescale? So I think that very short. So I think that very short term, what can we do kind of immediately that can affect next winter? And how do we work with HLB to? Or how do we work with land identified with HLB and the other entities around that, so other nonprofits, et cetera? Those are two, those are two tasks that are kind of right in front of us now, and I think what we can do there is do something similar to the Triple HAC. And put together a committee to focus on those two questions. And that would give them a, you know. Probably six months to a year's work focusing just on that. And we should be able to do that under, under our proposition several powers, which we don't technically have. But will be in place by, hopefully when it's certified on April twenty-fifth. So what I would propose is we have a. Is we start while thinking about what that committee should be like. And, you know, come up with a specific scope for those two tasks and have that as a twelve month. Twelve month committee. And then something would follow that. Now meanwhile, we have this housing action plan, housing implementation plan off to one side, and I think that's going to take a little bit longer to work out how we fund it. And, and how that ties in with the community in general, but I think we can separate out these very short term things that need to be worked on immediately. With things that need to be worked on over the next sort of several months.
Thank you, Mike, for starting us on this conversation and playing out all those options. Um, any comments first from board, Jennifer?
Just question.
Yes.
Sorry, just to make sure I'm absolutely clear, could you just repeat the two tasks?
Yeah, I think the two tasks that are right in front of us, that we could, we could have a committee working on kind of, you know, in a few weeks. Are the very short term things of what can we do? That can basically create temporary housing or allow temporary housing to be used that provides a ace. Bridge between now and having something, having lower cost housing available in the community in the two to three year timescale. So the, the first thing is what can we do now? And then the second task is that two to three year timescale of. HLB has been given the task of identifying land which could be, you know, transmitted to a, by the way. Local nonprofit or a local nonprofit partnering with another nonprofit, non- criteria nonprofit, uh, to build attainable housing or affordable housing. And I think that's having some part of our sort of form, GBOS body, looking at that from our perspective is, is the other task. So there are really two deliverables, one is recommendations, you know, hopefully by the summer, they'd have recommendations on changes we can make now to help for next winter, next summer. And then in the probably six, you know, by the fall, they'd have fall or end of the year, they'd have recommendations for working with HLB for what we have to do on that side.
Okay, so forgive me, but short version is now, question mark, and three to five years, question mark?
Uh, for that, for that committee, it's actually now and two to three years.
Two to three, okay.
And then there's the separate thing of putting together a house action plan, which is a three to five year. That, that has most impact in the three to five years timescale, but that project itself is probably a one-year project. It just cannot start immediately because we didn't need to fund it.
For this committee? Or not for this committee?
Not for that committee. I think that's a broader question and probably would involve a wider, you know, a wider selection of the community in general. Although it might be something we fund.
It's a quick clarification question, when we're talking about what, like temporary housing. And that range, are we ask, are we looking for specifically? Workforce housing or are we looking for anything along the range?
I think that's a good question, we need to, as a body, we need to either decide or give that committee the task to first of all identify what is feasible.
Okay. Done.
So I'm clear, this recommendation from Land Use Committee. Is a recommendation for Land Use Committee and GBOS to get back together and hold a formal workshop? Are we talking a community-wide workshop?
I, I think the, I think the, the recommendation for Land Use was something closer to a community-wide workshop, but they identified several different things. And that was the thing that I voted on. So I think we have to look at it a little bit methodistically about what are all the things we need to do and how can we achieve them? You know, if, as efficiently as you can within government.
Right. And I would just add, I think there are lots of ideas and they're all great ideas, but if we could compartmentalize them into the short term, what? It's very soon, a community is supposed to come to Gerwood or their next meeting and announce their identification of certain land that would be. Best suited or will become more, or attainable identity housing, whatever they call it. And then what? You could have a committee do with that information right away. And without that information, but knowing that information is supposed to be coming. And then the three to five year would be the action plan and that committee could be forming meanwhile or take longer to start because it would be fun.
Yeah, there are these two, the, the actual plan is a separate thing from the. Whatever we're going to call this thing, it will not.
Yeah. They could send for that very much so, but because that had so much, it still has a lot of momentum and energy and people are interested and have comments and concerns and want. Want that something is being started and back to them, so in the short term, we could make.
So what?
Go ahead.
Okay, so if, if this, if there's, if there's kind of. General support for this idea of to, to focus on, have an add-on committee to focus on the shorter term issues. Then I think what we should do is the similar, similar approach to what we did with Triple HAC. Is, is basically decide on a scope and whether we do it at this meeting or not, I'm not sure. But decide on the scope very soon and put out a call for nominations. Which includes self-nomination.
The scope of the committee?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I agree with that. Terms and all that stuff?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, and what was helpful real quick was. Goals, which would be probably in the scope and then that timeframe, because that's what helps people know if they can be available and committed. Jennifer, it looks like you had some.
I do have a question.
Yes.
Um, I, my question is about the actual LUC recommendation. Which, okay, to be delayed, that conversation got a little far afield and it has, I think, a couple of issues with it, but. Officially, what we're looking at is their recommendation was we hold a strategic planning facility workshop to set goals and what, excuse me, what I hear us doing instead is setting the goals. And so. I suspect we have to decide if we're comfortable with that, one option would be because I, I believe the protocol on this is if we do something different than what Land Use votes for, then we send it back to Land Use and say, hey, wait a minute, guys, how about this? And I, I do still see a lot of benefit that we could have, maybe we could kind of split it and say, what do you think about this? Let's get this going right now with these goals and then let's meet as a community with this kind of workshop idea to talk about. Brainstorming, basically, because brainstorming is a little harder to fit within the community structure or also to. Community structure, but also to involve the whole community is, is kind of perfect for that, I think.
Good segue, so I, I agree with the, I think what the, this particular request coming out of LUC was more of a. You know, what do we, what would be kind of a kickoff activity, a capturing the community sentiment activity around a action plan and implementation plan? So I think that still, that still ties in with the, with the, this general. Approach of splitting the task into sort of two sections. And this sort of bigger community meeting would be part of the second section, it's not actually a GBOS committee that are part of a housing action plan. Which were kind of, you know, it can run roughly in parallel with the area plan, but it, it would complete after the area plan and would take in. You know, as this starting point, what's coming from the area. Um, I think the, the question I have is how we fund that? And I do take Kyle's expertise very, very seriously about, I think you said it was going to be a multi, multi-month activity. To, you know, go through an RFP process and, you know, even if we had a source contract, it's still a many, many months. To justify that and go through the whole process of getting money together, so, you know, maybe that's a four or five month activity to get to a point where we could actually do that kickoff. If the community wants to do, and LUC wants to do this sooner, then probably it's not, at least that initial part probably isn't a. An activity that we could fund directly, but we could fund what follows that. And maybe we have a separate entity, maybe a nonprofit in the community, for example. Fund that kind of initial meeting and kickoff and then that information gets passed into. The, the sort of real planning activity.
Okay, so I have a proposition, if that fits within the discussion, that we. We move ahead with this, with a, unless LUC, we move ahead with this committee idea unless LUC says. Halt, discease and desist, basically. But, and we could even maybe this time now, I'd like us to make progress on it, so I, I'd like us to see like. What different roles we might want on the committee and let's, let's make some suggestions and then. The other thing I'd like to, I'd like to toss back this community conversation idea to LUC with the idea that, you know, we, we've managed this as town halls. And we've managed this without RFPs and funding and. I don't, I don't know that we have to do it that way, let's, let's put it, let's try and, putting it out to the community of like, hey, is there a way we can do this without making it complicated? Like, maybe we can do it by next month if we do it like a town hall and we have the church and this going. Uh, I'd like, let's, there might be a way we can learn on this without having to get involved into quite the conversation about it, or as, as Mike mentioned. If a nonprofit is willing to pick it up and make it happen.
I mean, it's probably just a facilitation, it just need a. Somebody professional to, somebody who can, can do it well and has the right subject matter expertise to kind of facilitate a discussion. That could be, I don't know if we're going to be able to fund that.
I'll, I'll address that a little bit from the money side aspect that was quite talked about at LUC in the sense that if we use taxpayer dollars, it takes quite a process. We have to go through RFP process, a selection. The way the purchasing restrictions are now through the assembly, it just adds on another month and a half to the process, so you're looking at three to four months before we even have somebody on board. One thing that, you know, from a staff perspective, when we do these type of RFPs, either through a nonprofit or through using the purchasing RBA is. A developed scope of work of what you, if you're going to hire a facilitator, you want to tell what that facilitator is going to do and what the end results are going to be. And you want them to produce that, and so I think there's a couple of steps that need to happen, one is that scope. What happens at this town hall meeting is very clear as to what's going to be asked of and taken care of there. I think there was a feeling that bringing in somebody independent would help with this, to help with planning, so that's why. Was mentioned in that aspect. And if there is a nonprofit entity, you know, I agree with him, was expressing interest or, or, you know, even the chamber maybe. They, they could definitely fund it. But I think the scope still kind of has to be hammered out at the LUC level. It wasn't clear coming out of that meeting as to what was the end result we wanted a facilitator, whatever this meeting was going to produce in that aspect. Uh, but then from there, if we do get the results, uh, we should have that power in hand. And at that point, GBOS can, problem is you don't have a budget this year for twenty-two, um, for that power, but you could move funds from undesigned funds. And we could create something and make it work for the rest of the year, we did that with cemetery. And, and then in twenty-three, excuse me, in twenty-four. You'll be able to set a budget for that new power, continue on with the work.
Thank you, Kyle. Jennifer?
So my understanding correctly, we could maybe toss this back to LUC and say, can we get real specific on, on what exactly you want the end goal to be, but. Also, I personally would like a little more clarification, are we absolutely sure this can be handled without spending government money on the town hall? Uh, structure that we've, we used a couple of times before in the last year? Uh, depending on what those exact goal, end goals are. With. Yes.
Well, if you're finished and then.
Yeah.
Soon. Um, I do understand your reluctance, I think some firm. Not putting forward what Land Use Committee specifically asked, because we got in trouble for that. And we took a clock about it. But I don't want to, I, you know, I don't, I don't think we're acting bad, saying by at least getting this going and trying to get a committee going and getting people working on it, talking about the town hall and talking about. The short term and long term, so I would hate to. See this go back to land use, but I don't think we're going against there, I, I think we're still pushing it forward, we just need to. I mean, forming this thing is going to be a first step too, right? So.
As one clarification, that's just hoping we can kind of bifurcate it, I think someone, what Michael's already saying. I think if I got it right, that, yeah, let's do the committee and then let's talk about how to do the conversation. Let's get going and also. Get the community consensus, but maybe in a way that's quicker.
Yeah.
Great, and just to chime in, I know you were maybe going to say something, Mike, on this agenda item, part of it says formal subcommittee to address long-term housing needs. So we would start that portion by maybe acting on something tonight about. First steps of formal subcommittee. And then the other portion, address at future meetings. Longer. Kyle?
I suggest that maybe you move on with that creation of that subcommittee, but also at the same time work on a scope of work that you take back to LUC to say, okay, we've flattened your message, here's the scope of work we proposed to you to address what your request is, are you happy with that? And if they're happy with that, you move forward in that aspect.
So I'm.
Mike, go ahead.
So I'm taken by, I'm going to follow up on the comment Jennifer made, because I agree, it's one thing, I think because of the situation we're in, in terms of anything that's funded by GBOS. If there's a, if there's a desire for the, for that, for the community discussion, I think that's going to take too long for us to fund it. But that community discussion has to go into something that's implementable. And that second part of the action, the action plan or implementation plan, I think that does fall within government funding. So I, the way I would structure it is that we, we probably focus on that planning thing as the long-term scope and that's maybe where we. You know, where we spend money. And then anything preceding that, we can, we don't, we'd have to swap into it, so it would be more of that thing provides input into that planning activity. And then just throw that back to LUC and if, if there's some other funding source. And I think, you know, if we do it as part of, as part of a plan, it's, say, four months down the road, and I think there's a desire to do it sooner than that. And if we do do it sooner than that, then it would have to have some other funding source, so.
Yeah.
You know, maybe that's a throw out to the community as a whole and see if anyone else is interested in doing that.
Yep, key ingredient.
But we would focus, we would focus our scoping work on what follows that. And then almost by definition, that kind of, you know, that gives you a sense of what has to come out of the community meeting.
Thanks, Mike. Uh, any other comments from the board?
Well, again, I think we, we've had a suggestion and maybe we should actually go a little bit further down the subcommittee path now.
Yeah.
I feel comfortable starting.
That's, I think now is the great time.
Right, so, so I think the scope should be to address two key questions. Uh, question number one is. How do we, you know, how do we work with? Or from, you know, from a. Community side, from a representative local governance side, how will we work with the activity which HLB is doing and reporting on, I believe on the twentieth next week? Uh, to the, to the assembly committee. For identifying land and, and working with a local nonprofit, possibly partnering with another nonprofit to develop affordable house. So that's question number one. And then question number two is, are there any temporary changes we can make or recommend that could solve, could provide temporary housing? In the six to twelve month timescale? To provide a partial solution until we get this HLB land and that developed into housing.
This short term, you talked about. Changing some of the regulations, is that what?
Yeah. I mean, so, there's an example, I'm not saying it's the best example, but as an example. There was talk about, this is actually related to some solutions to homelessness within Anchorage. But there was talk about using some temporary housing solutions there and COG just doesn't allow you to do it. And we have exactly the same situation, is, you know, COG reflects a lot of things we do to having to be more permanent housing solutions, which is fair. It's just we have this problem that we are not going to be able to provide that permanent housing for at least two years. And we have the, we have a problem today. And it's, I think it's negligent for us to say that, you know, under the current structure, we can't do anything for two years, we won't try. I think it's more appropriate to say, under current structure, we can't do anything for two years, so let's try and change the current structure, so there is a solution which we can implement sooner than that. Or we can invite. Or we can invite a mechanism for others to, we're not necessarily going to do it, fund it. But I think we, we need to do the outreach, well, this committee needs to do the outreach and, and find out what other ideas are out there and what other, you know, suggestions have come. For example, I've heard this from other business owners about, you know, a short-term RV park or something like this, you know, on land they own. Is that even feasible? These are the kinds of questions I think we should address right now.
Right, Jennifer.
Question for the chair.
Yes.
I think I heard that Randy is, is being sulked on now. I thought I heard.
I didn't see him come in yet.
I thought he didn't come in yet. Okay.
I'm here, I'm here.
Yep.
Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you, yes. Just, we skipped your update a while ago, but now we're on number eight. I mean, number nine. So did you have a question for him?
I did. I was interested if he had any feedback about the conversation we're having right now. And in particular, in light of, I saw and heard some of your comments in connection to temporary housing to combat the folks on sheltered and Anchorage. And so I just wondered if you had anything to weigh in.
Yeah. Yeah. So I've, I've talked to Palat Shelter today and Dignity Moves. I'm going to visit Dignity Moves on Wednesday. I'm kind of a hammer pounding a square peg at a round hole. So the general advice is for a temporary shelter such as the Palat Shelter is basically the Assembly would waive the code for a specific location for a specific period of time. And that would let you to, allow you to continue using shelters and move on to a more permanent housing solution. We're also at the CEDC posing the question to planning and zoning, what changes would we need to make to Title 21 and Title 23 to allow for this kind of sheltering? Again, it's sheltering opportunities. You know, in my experience, planning and zoning is, is they'll tell you why they can't versus why they can. So I really want to push them into, into that space of, I'm not asking you how you can't do it. I'm asking what I need to do to make it happen. And if we can do that, we can also possibly look at sheltered opportunity code changes for Girdwood that would allow something like this. I know I sent maybe Mike and a few others a flyer on, I think it was an 88 person man camp that was for sale for a little less than $4 million. Again, we're going to try the Palat Shelter, maybe. We're going to try the Dignity Moves, which is similar to a Palat Shelter, possibly relocateables from ASD. So again, just trying to, my immediate concern is trying to save off the, the pending shelter or Sullivan disaster coming the end of the month or in sometime in May. So hope that helps.
Thank you. We have.
We're not, we're not talking about exactly the same thing. We're talking about the, the same prop. We have a different problem here. But the same approach could help. There's a lot of things we can't do to the current code. That if we, if we frame them, excuse the pun, as a, as a temporary solution for two years or three years and sunset it so it doesn't last any longer. The, the objections to, you know, these solutions, there's a permanent, there's a permanent solution go away. We just have this period where we cannot get what we need within two years. So we still have the problem within two years. So how do we address it now? And it may be there isn't a practical solution, but I think there needs to be a, a group of people looking at this series.
Yeah, I, I'd agree. I mean, you know, if the mayor would declare an emergency, we can, we can cut a lot of red tape. There seems to be a reluctance to declare any kind of emergency. But we certainly, I mean, the alternative in Anchorage is people living in the woods. The alternative in Girdwood is people dying, living in cars. So it seems silly that if we have the resources available, why we can't connect that to the person and make it happen in these kind of situations. And especially on a temporary basis, while we figure out the solution, the real solution and get temporary code changes. So that's, I think that's probably our best, our best pass, path is sort of an emergency action followed by what's going to take longer term changes to codes.
Thank you, Randy, for your comments and for being here.
Yep. Sorry I was late. I just, I just, I just got home late today.
It's really okay. Okay. Thank you. Glad we noticed you were there. Any other comments on the latest issues brought up? Jennifer?
Sorry, moving along on this committee. Do, if the chair is approved and the rest of the board feels up for this, I wonder if we can go ahead and kind of lay out what we might do before in the committee and then go on. And I have a couple of suggestions.
Okay. I think that sounds good.
Okay. I was thinking in particular, I would like the, maybe similar to HHAC to and also to, to specifically, to look for certain roles, not just self-solicitation, but to look for certain roles. I appreciated about that prior committee that we specifically wanted a long-term renter on there. And I, I'd like to see that again. I'd also like to see somebody specifically with some legal background and specifically somebody with some financial background. So we can stay grounded in what's, and then lastly, also somebody with some code background. So we can stay grounded in, in what's possible and legal and economically feasible.
Thank you. Okay. We're all taking notes there. And I think we, by judging by the comments and nodding for two short-term goals, key questions of scope that Mike said, we have in front of us or brushed on the mind from that part of the discussion. Anything else you want to talk about for subcommittee guy?
I don't think you said, talked about it was, it was brought up during our joint meeting, land use to, I don't know. I don't know if we need to totally define these roles, but somebody possibly from Girdwood Inc. or Girdwood Land Trust or, you know, these people that have been, you know, working on this for a long time to be part of this process. I don't know if we want to say specifically, here's your groups that are probably somebody else, but.
Yes, thank you, guys. That was definitely highly recommended at land use. Yes, Mike?
Yeah, I would advise against slicing this too finely. We're talking about, you know, five to seven people typically. And we probably have, we probably, you know, we probably have specified more than that in terms of number of requirements. So I would say that, you know, there's, there's some two or three broad things that we would expect to be covered across the breadth. And then who's interested is the most, who's interested in, you know, we, we think is suitable is the most important question. Who's prepared to work it? So I would have something which is less constricted, but these are all desirable traits that are not, not something we ever require.
No, I get it. Yeah. You know, I don't know if it's, we build a committee, but you say you have to be on this committee to be on. It's the best way to build a committee. Those people do bring a lot to the table.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. Right. And in that light, I would just add by including members of the public to attend and participate, which has been going pretty well in the last two years, that those groups would be represented by being there. So maybe not be committee. We don't know that right now. So I have two comments. Grace has her hand up and then one in the room. So Grace, if you have something, go ahead.
Thank you. I think, you know, as Randy shared with you, emergency may be the, the language that needs to be put forward with respect to this committee. Honestly, it's a crisis in Girdwood. The housing crisis, it is a housing crisis in a sector of our community that we have not had a chance to address. And I think as other communities in the United States have been dealing with the subject, dealing with their existing codes that generally specifically don't allow for alternative housing approaches. I think it's very important that we recognize that this is a crisis in Girdwood. And with that being said, there's a lot of leeway when one addresses this problem saying it's a crisis. So codes can be bypassed. There can be other alternative solutions brought to the table that generally could not be brought to the table to deal with problems of this size at this moment. But because when you say it's a crisis, folks and with respect to the system that we have in place, make exceptions to the rule. And I really would suggest that we take a strong look at, at really renaming or addressing this subject matter as it's our crisis in Girdwood. It's maybe not a crisis in Anchorage. They have a completely different issue with respect to the homeless population. We have a homeless pop problem, but it is not dealing with homeless properties or problems or people that have other issues like we have. So that is one thing that I, I suggest very strongly when looking at this potential new committees or set of goals that you're talking about. Because right now, other communities in the country are doing that and renaming it has been an important matter that has moved the needle forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Matt in the room, if you would come closer and thanks, Brian.
Yeah, hi, Matt Director. Just, just if we wanted to say, you know, in terms of, Mike, in terms of your thoughts on the short term, like the immediate, I think that's, I think it's an excellent idea. My thought on the committee is simply is, you mentioned self-solicitation. And I think to Jen's point about making sure we have the right people. I'm all for democracy, but we need the right seven or nine people working as that group. That's, that should be the top priorities to get those, get those people. Whether it was a representative from Girdwood Inc., it's who do we think has the best chance to move the ball forward financially, legally, politically, et cetera? The other thing I would say too is that, you know, we talked about kind of the town hall meeting or the kind of the community meeting. When the group kind of gets its ideas together for the short-term and or kind of one to two-year plan, that can then be brought to the community to throw stones at. So kind of the, the small group has all the expertise, but they're not going to be perfect. They throw stones amongst themselves. Then they bring plans to the community for six and six-month or one and two-year plans and the community throws stones at it. So there's a lot of transparency, but it's not, I wouldn't say it's always going to be democratic. So that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Brooks, go ahead online.
Good evening. Thank you. Speaking specifically to this recommendation, my take on it is that it is not needed to attempt to hold a formal strategic planning facilitated workshop to set goals for a formal subcommittee to address long-term housing needs. To me, that sounds like a way to delay significant and serious discussion of a significant and serious problem. So although I certainly respect, you know, what the LUC does, in my opinion, this recommendation should not be approved by the board. Because I think action is required that can be instituted much more quickly than what this recommendation would entail. Secondly, just from a structural standpoint, in my view, rather than start with a workshop to set goals for a, a formal subcommittee, you should establish a formal subcommittee and that subcommittee should hold meetings. And people can discuss at that meeting, you know, what the goal should be, which frankly, the fairly simple concept to me, I mean, the goal is get more housing in Girdwood. I mean, it's, so it's not the goal, it's how do you get that? That is a more appropriate discussion. And I just think it's, we'll get there quicker if you start with the subcommittee rather than a formal strategic planning facilitated workshop. So to the extent there's a motion on the floor to approve the LUC recommendation, I would suggest you not approve it. And explain to the LUC that the reason you didn't approve it is because you want to move more quickly. And that you think you can move more quickly if you establish the supplement first. It was unclear to me from the discussion whether there actually is a motion on the floor and whether, you know, exactly how you intend to deal with this pretty specific recommendation from the LUC. I mean, it might not have a lot of details, but the basic recommendation is pretty easy to understand and act on. So that's the, oh, just one other thing. I really, really appreciate the engagement of the Assembly members sulking on this problem. I think we're very fortunate to have somebody that genuinely cares about it at his level, you know, at, at a, because as an elected official on the Assembly, he is in a position to actually make things happen. You know, our job is more to just give people ideas, but he's keen to actually make something happen. So I'm really, really happy that he's engaged. Thanks.
Thank you, Brooks. Brian in the room?
Thank you. I appreciate it, Bree, Brianna. So to what, to what Brooks was talking about and, and the, the motion coming forward from Land Use Committee was, you know, schedule and, and source funding for facilitation of a community workshop, develop scope and goals of a committee to address the housing needs. I think that came fairly specific from Land Use Committee. I wonder if someone from this group would be willing to go meet with like Girdwood Inc. when they meet, I think next week maybe. See if they have some funding that they are going to be banking available. And I wonder if we have a couple of groups within the community already starting to work independent of each other. And if we can find a way to harness what is going on in the community right now into a more focused subcommittee. But that as Brooks brings out, needs to be the one that, that comes up with some of the goals and helps facilitate a conversation moving forward. But for finding that, that, that money out there from private sources, rather than going through some funding that's going to take a long time. We might be able to shake the tree a little bit and see if there's some groups out there that have something for us.
Thank you, Brian.
I'm going to make a motion to, I'm not ignoring what you're saying, Brian. I'm just going to try and make a motion to deal with the other part. I think we're close to a decision. So I'm going to risk, risk something by suggesting workforce housing, AdHoc workforce housing advisory committee, which has an unfortunate acronym. But, but for want of a better term, let's form a, let's create a committee now, which has the two items of scope we identified earlier.
Okay.
We can refine the scope before we actually appoint people, but I think we should, we should lay out the general scope and, you know, we're looking for say five to seven person committees.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor and we have seconds to create a subcommittee. Jennifer, a second. Okay, now further discussion. Go ahead. Board first.
So a couple of friendly amendments. It's tough. One is, one is if you let them name it. So we're, we're going to do a housing committee, but I'm not sure if I'm looking WFHAC. And we learned last time that things need to be done with CARE. So why don't we leave that?
Although we can, yeah.
Okay. All right. So we will ask the committee to, this is a Girdwood housing focused committee of some kind.
An ad hoc one with specific short-term goals.
Right, right. And then I would, I, I might ask for seven to nine. And I would also like to ask that we include, I now have a list of some of the things we're looking for, for preference on as we pick. And then lastly, I would also like it if we could include terms at this point. So we could throw out two years and see what the board thinks.
So those were a couple of amendments, but I think they were really two, three-ish.
Okay. So let's start, well, we could start with the naming one and.
I've got, I've got.
We're good to go. Okay, so that, exactly that. Okay. Second one was including the list of things we're looking for is as part of this committee formation.
Okay.
And then third one was including terms of some kind.
Okay. I also heard the number.
Oh, the number.
Which shares the number seven, but the more people, the more complicated schedules get. So I feel like eight, nine could be a person that's not always there, requiring attendance. Five to seven is easier.
Let's say, let's say seven. Why do is proposed if the second is okay. Let's say seven people. But if we get more, but the intent is.
That's what we did. Okay. Does that follow for people that are listening?
I have a question or comment.
Okay. And then the terms before that guy, the terms. Okay, and then the terms before that guy, the terms would be up for discussion. And initially, this suggestion was a six to 12 month timescale for action goals. I mean, don't confuse action with the long-term plan, but the goals, so it could start with 12 months, just so we finally have a window.
I was hoping for something definite, I don't.
At least 12, I would say.
Guy. Yeah, so just on the scope, you know, I think Brooks mentioned it too, I mean, there's going to be a lot of smart people that get together, so this scope is just a guide on where to start it off.
And right now, it's the two key points that Mike brought up that we were adding to, but they would be more fine tuned after the meeting.
Or expanded.
Definitely. Anything else on those? I'll, before we take a handout there online, could be.
Wait.
Yes.
So did we set a term?
Twelve.
I suggested 12 months.
So that's a friendly amendment, so 12 months, an ad hoc committee to last a 12 month.
Yeah, so like that'd be like the starting point.
Yeah.
Maybe continue, and then there are substitutes for other people to step into that place. Is the body comfortable with voting on these amendments?
I'm not clear what the set of criteria are looking for and what is listed.
So we haven't covered that in a minute yet.
It tells the most.
I guess the question is, so far so good. I think that's the question, so far so good.
Okay, so far so good. We wanted to go over that next or vote on ones, the amendments without those specific ones?
Yeah, the motion, we've just kind of accepted those amendments. So now what we have is a motion, which is we're going to create a, an ad hoc committee with 12 months to be named with seven members, looking at the two items we discussed earlier, short-term approaches to allow temporary housing within the, you know, two-year, one to two-year timescale, and to help with the HLB identifying line, which can be passed off to a local nonprofit for development into a portal box. So they're the two topics they're looking at. We have seven members named to be determined. What we haven't done yet is identified what particular list of requirements we're looking for, a list of things we're looking for.
We can do that next if we're all going by sent these amendments. Is that okay?
Well, we've actually changed the motion, the motion now includes those.
Right, okay. Motion now includes those, and let's move to those specific items then.
So to be clear, it's not like everybody has to have a label or that they're set roles, but I think it would be fair to say that in particular, we're looking for attributes that include legal, financial, code, long-term, renter, local nonprofit, builder, real estate, resort development, or community need experience.
Let's also break Jen first, and experienced, amended, essential.
Exactly.
Applicants.
Yes.
Could you read the list I got to, it's nonprofit.
Sorry. Legal, financial, code, long-term renter, local nonprofit, builder, real estate, resort development, community needs.
You say community needs was the last one.
Community needs.
Needs, okay. Right. Any further discussion on those attributes?
Just one question, Mike brought it up, and I agree, they need, I don't know how much time they're going to have to spend on this each month, but if we're going to consider or let those people, we need to think about that, if they have time to commit to it.
They might come up with that, I would think, but that is a really big question.
We should consider it if we're hitting.
And. We sit the room and staff and all of that, it's not just presumed. We have one, we should keep going, but we do have one hand online, or should we just finalize this amendment?
Yeah, I'd say that's, we have this amendment of the list of, the list of, the list of attributes we would like across the board, but that's for us to, so I guess in the solicitation we're saying, you know, make it, make it known if you call it to any scheduling.
Yeah, that sounds very beneficial. Okay, anything else? All right. Could we then, Ryan Hutchins, thanks for being so patient, maybe could you go ahead?
Hi, thank you. So I was the one who put forth the LUC motion that passed unanimously in the last Land Use Committee, so I think I can maybe add some clarity to what we were requesting. There was, there was a feeling, it seemed amongst the members, that there's a number of organizations within the community that are already doing a lot of work with this that people not affiliated with those organizations may not be aware of. And so providing a workshop to the community that was open to everybody but allowed those organizations to also present their work, we thought would help better educate the community on what is already being done, what challenges we face, and what opportunities there are as well. We specifically asked GBOS to fund this, or to not, pardon me, not to fund it, but to source funding based on staff's recommendation that government funding would be time-consuming and more of a challenge. So I get, I hear you all moving forward with creating the committee. There was consensus among the folks at the Land Use Committee that getting the community together to talk about what our needs were and who the community thinks should be on this committee and what the goals should be was very important. The members of the Land Use Committee also felt strongly that there should be a professional facilitator during that period, and that it should not be facilitated by a member of the community. So hopefully that information is helpful as you all continue this discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan, for speaking up. And any other comments from the board on that?
Yeah, I mean, I agree with what Ryan says. I think what he's talking about is slightly different from what we're talking about in terms of the specific subcommittee with the specific set of short-term goals. I think that's very, that's really more focused on the longer-term, longer medium-term activity that we have decided we can't fund immediately.
Guy.
I didn't get that from you, maybe you can come back on and clarify that. It sounded like he wanted that process to be part of developing what we are about this committee and defining this committee. And if that's, if he made the motion, if that's what they're saying, and that's what Land Use put us to, asked us to do, then we should consider what we're doing because we've done this before. It's slowed things down, so.
Ryan, did you?
Can I just sort of quickly, I think there's a distinction between things we do within our service area powers, which we unilaterally should be doing, and things where we're using land use as a, as, you know, affecting the community council type role, the community council advisory role. What we're talking about in terms of this subcommittee is things that are within our powers or will be as of October the 25th certified. So it's not Land Use's job to tell us how to do that. It's not Land Use's job to tell us how to do, how to do public safety and other things that within that. We well know it, I'm saying it's not, it's a different situation from things which are, you know, a pure community council thing and outside service area role. So this is the separation between the service area responsibility, which is, which I would say is these, the shorter term things that we want to try and move on quickly now, and the longer term things, which maybe the service area can help fund, but is more of a community activity. So there's, there is a distinction between these two things.
Right, we did meet with the Land Use Committee, Joint Committee, asking them to do just less, right?
Yeah, that's right.
And they made a reflection.
Yes.
But I'm just, you know, we've seen it before, and I don't, if it's completely not what they're looking for, they're probably not stopping, but.
Right, okay. Ryan, do you have any follow-up? Just in case.
I mean, I think it would be accurate to say that we were not asking GBOS to form a subcommittee immediately. Yeah, I think, I think that that is an accurate statement. You know, I don't think that anything we sent to you necessarily prohibits that, or law obviously doesn't prohibit it, but like discourages it. But from the community discussion in that meeting, my sense was, and the way I tried to word the motion was so that the community could gather and discuss what needs were. And I understand that that may be a slower process. I guess I just want to make sure that there's understanding on what Land Use was requesting.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much for that. And Karen, do you have something?
I'm just listening to the conversation, especially after the gentleman that was at Land Use kind of clarified what their temp was. It's always been my understanding for as long as I've lived in Girdwood that the Land Use Committee is really the body that should make all decisions having to do with land use. And GBOS's goal is to simply pass on that information. So if there's a question, if you don't think the Land Use made the right decision, the most appropriate thing to do is kick it back to them, not tell them what to do. You just kick it back and say, for whatever reason, we don't think you did it right, go do it again. It is, I do not believe it's the GBOS's purview to actually develop land use strategies or plans or even subcommittees, that's Land Use.
Thank you. Any other comments from the board? Jennifer?
Yeah, actually, we do have a protocol for this, I mean, I don't have my manual underneath, but we do have a protocol for this. I think we can, we can say, hey, here's, here's our suggestion, this committee, let's get moving forward with this right now. But also, we certainly can take this other idea. One of the things that I noticed in the Land Use discussion that didn't really come up is some of the practicalities, like for example, the fact that their idea about funding is really going to make this take so much longer. Like if we accept the idea that we are in crisis, can we really wait however long the funding business takes to then have a facilitated conversation to then do this, to then do that? Can we really wait that long under crisis? So I think I would like to still address this motion, pass it if we want to pass it, and then say, all right, Land Use, this is what we think. Here's our suggestion for this committee. We aren't, there is still lots of room to talk about what can we do right now? That whole conversation, that is a community conversation too, that this committee can guide and inform. And same thing with the longer range plan. We are in a kind of a tricky place, and Mike, you're pretty good at this, I think we are in kind of a tricky place where we're about to take over housing as a, however, under Land, or sorry, under GBOS. So it's, it's, this is going to start working a little bit differently than I think traditionally it has. Like we will be responsible for, as soon as funds are involved, GBOS is the entity. Am I correct on that, Mike?
If it's, yeah, if it's serving function.
That's right.
Okay. Thank you, Jennifer, for your thoughts on that too, and all the discussion. Are there any other questions from the board or comments on the motion, the amendments? I think in lieu of time and on this item, we're almost to an hour, so we could vote on that right now if they have motion. I think, Ryan, your hand might be up from before, and the other speaker's spoken a few times, if it's really quick, and if the body's okay, I could take the other hand.
Can we just extend this by 10 minutes?
Yes. Will you take out a motion?
I added nine, but 10 minutes.
Do you have a second? Okay, second, any objection? Okay, thank you. We'll extend this 10 more minutes. Grace, please go ahead.
Thank you, Amanda. Thank you, Brianna. I think one of the things that I think we need to consider while we're talking about this committee, and this goes to the makeup of the committee. Personally, over the last year and a half, I think we've, I've come to the conclusion that we have a crisis in housing in excess of over 100-person need in our community. And I'm talking about 100 workforce housing deficiency, if not more than maybe even 200 people in Girdwood today that are suffering from lack of quality and safe housing. And if we're going to be talking about this issue of providing a subcommittee that is going to address this issue, I think we should address, you know, like I said, the elephant in the room, which is, you know, anywhere from 100 to 200 people of need. With that being said, we really do need to structure the committee with individuals that understand the economic impact that that has. So when you're talking about a development, which is not unusual in most communities, in Girdwood it will be a first, we are talking about a development team or a developer, a builder, that has experience dealing with 100 units. That means a project level of somewhere between $30 to $50 million. That is not the Girdwood environment that we're talking about today. So when we're talking about a makeup of committee members, I really encourage you to be talking about an architect, civil people, a builder, lender, and the folks that really understand what it means to do 100, I mean, a $30 to $50 million project, because that is what we're talking about. We have experience in our commuter, community of the greater Anchorage area, but certainly we do not have that experience in Girdwood Valley today. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the board? Okay, are we ready to vote on this? I'll take.
Actually, can I make a just?
Please make one more.
Since we've got 10 extra minutes, we left. So the Land Use recommendation was to hold a formal strategic planning facilitated thing. I mean, what this reads here, and I don't agree with it 100% because I think it does, I think forming a committee is like the first step, and I was worried about that given the Land Use Committee, but what they're recommending is definitely not what we're doing, right?
Yeah, well, I mean, it's just, it is a recommendation.
Okay.
And not, this item has been discussed by our body before, and so from the subcommittee was not, I don't think far-fetched from something doing next a few months ago to address its urgent need. Jennifer?
Yeah, so actually, I don't see anything here that prevents that just per se, but they wanted the facilitated workshop to set the goals. We're saying, okay, what about these potential goals for now, just to get started? And then I don't think that precludes doing this, but yes, it is different than exactly what came through. I think we pass what we want to pass, send it down to them, say, hey, what do you think?
I think this is the most efficient way to go forward is what we're talking about, but it's not. I think this is the most efficient way to go forward is what we're talking about, but it's not what they're asking.
Right.
And he had to take a lot of conversation and put it into one sentence.
Yes.
Pretty difficult to do, I think, to encompass it all. All right, uh, I'll ask for a roll call vote, Kyle?
Uh, Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Mike Edgington?
Yes.
Guy Wade?
Yes.
Jennifer Windguard?
Yes.
Amanda Sassy?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Now, the motion with the.
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you, everyone, for all of your comments and discussions. Mike?
So, yeah, so just, just going back to um, what we have done is not exactly what we see recommended. We've done some things, but.
It's not at all.
Um, right, and so, because they're talking about long term, as it leads, and we're focusing more on short term issues. Um, so I think still the question is, is there any formal action we want to take on um the longer term, you know, planning activity and um, you know, this this request about a facilitated workshop or town hall? And I'm, I mean, I think what I've heard so far is, we're not in a position to, be because of the issues around the municipality functional functioning at the moment, we're not in a position to do anything in the short term, to fund anything in the short term. So what our our role would be is to ask somebody else to do it, in effect. Um, encourage it, but to ask somebody else to to fund it. On the longer term implementation or action plan, that's something we could start now. Um, or we can wait until we formally have the power, um, you know, in a in a week's time. I'm gonna, what I'm gonna suggest is we we um, we basically decline to, we decline to fund um, anything for, you know, this strategic plan, a formal strategic planning facilitated workshop, because we simply don't think we can do so in the in the timescale necessary. But we, we uh, we had an item on our next agenda to uh, to look at a, you know, to start the process of putting together an RFP and scope for an action plan or implementation plan, something of those like. And then, you know, we can definitely recommend or suggest that somebody else within the community may maybe in a better position to fund this facilitated workshop, um, with the intention of that feeding into this long term plan. So I guess the very specific thing is, we would, we we basically are not in a position to fund this thing in the short term. Uh, but we could, we can discuss our next meeting, funding a, you know, a a long term house of plan, an implementation plan. That's what I would say. So there's a motion. So the motion is that, you know, we, we basically put that back to land use and say, we don't think we can do this in the short term. We don't think we can fund this in the short term. Um, but we do, we are going to, in our next meeting, discuss um, what a long term action plan would look like, but how to fund that.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Jennifer. Uh, for further discussion, I would just add for obvious clarifying reasons that Prop seven will be certified the end of this month. We'll have a meeting until next month to to discuss this item further. So, uh, any other thoughts? Five for now. Ryan, is your hand still up from earlier?
It's up again, sorry.
No, apologies, I was checking. So go ahead, the board doesn't have anything at the moment.
Um, so the way that we, the way that I worded this motion and request was specifically that GBOS sourced funding, not that GBOS funds the workshop. Um, again, based on recommendations from staff, land use felt that it would be uh, slow and arduous to get work through funding um, governmentally. And so our hope was that GBOS could facilitate conversations with nonprofits or other organizations within Girdwood that may have funding um, and ask them for their assistance to fund a community workshop. So it sounds like there may be some misunderstanding about that. We are not requesting that GBOS fund the workshop. I understand that that is outside of GBOS's power until the election is certified and we figure out what we're doing with Prop seven. Um, but our request was that GBOS source the funding. We were hoping from an external entity. Thank you.
Thanks, Ryan.
So let modify the.
Okay.
Just modify the motion to uh, to say that we will uh, but we will, we will ask nicely. We will seek some, seek some funding from elsewhere.
Was the second, sure, I don't mind if to that. Okay, and after that, agreeing to the amendment, I was just gonna to remind us that if Girdwood Inc. has a meeting next week and someone could go, we could go but not make anything formal. I don't know how the body feels about that, but it would be before our next meeting, but it would just be for information maybe. Uh, Margaret?
I could use a restatement of the current motion.
Yeah. So, um, we, we're not in a, so what we will do is GBOS will encourage or encourage other entities to fund a facilitated workshop. Um, you know, we do not believe we are in a position to do so in the timescale needed. Um, and then additionally, at our next meeting, we will have a, we will discuss um, the scope of and potential funding of a a longer term housing implementation plan. I don't know if that's really a motion, that's kind of an agenda item.
Margaret?
As an observer, I think the thing that is somewhat problematic in this request of LUC and perhaps why I didn't register it and record it properly in this agenda is that the GBOS doesn't have the power to request other people spend their money on something like this. So, you know, it, I don't think that it's reasonable for the GBOS to be trying to facilitate something that is outside completely of their powers. Your powers are very defined, plus one coming, which is complicated enough. But um, as far as going to other entities and asking for them to fund a quasi-government function, which will be a government function here shortly, gets really confusing. And what I heard at the land use meeting did get confused having to do with well, if they're paying for it, then they get to determine the scope of work and who the facilitator is, and it it just gets really complicated in a hurry. And so I just wanted to offer that this has been kind of uh, a difficult topic from the get go. And it was a good solution they came up with in order to wrap it up and move it forward. But I can see why you're in the situation that you're in right now, too.
I'd like to withdraw my motion and uh, my second on the parade.
Okay, we see nodding and the motion is withdrawn.
So instead of the original motion, what I'm gonna propose is that uh, we we move forward and discuss our next meeting, um, a housing implementation plan, housing action plan, um, and how we will scope that and fund it. Um, and in the meantime, uh, what we will do is make it clear to any other interested parties. Uh, that we're intending to, we're going to be discussing that in the future, and it will, we will not be not be able to um, provide funding and uh, for this particular facilitated workshop in three or so.
I was thinking to that motion. Guy, you'll second?
I'll second it then for that.
After you second it, we can have a discussion. Okay? It's seconded by Guy. Discussion?
I think I, I think I don't doubt the beginning. Is this just a reply back to land use?
Yeah, basically, yeah.
So we're at least communicating.
Yeah, we're communicating. They're asking us to do something. We don't think we can.
Okay.
Oh, Jennifer?
I don't necessarily disagree. I understand the basics of we need to respond, but it does seem kind of general. I'm not really sure we're getting, where we're gonna get with long term planning next week, I mean, at our next meeting, like it seems like kind of a big ask for what's we're gonna be discussing at the next meeting, but let's, let's try it. I mean, I'm a bit of trying it, but I can, I can still see some pitfalls.
You're kind of punting a bit as well.
Yes, exactly.
And just to add, it is long term, so it doesn't have to be absolutely finished at the next meeting, but the conversation continues.
I just say one thing, so, yeah, I mean, that's, we've done two things. And I think what we, what we've effectively done is separate out, of course, the things we need to act on immediately with things we do not need to act on immediately, but still have to be treated with some urgency. By by pulling out, you know, to act on immediately and starting to act on it, so.
Uh, and we did go four minutes over, ten minutes?
Can I give this just a five minute extension then, so we can just vote?
Yeah, let's, let's five minute extension to vote. Do we have a second?
Also.
Thanks, Jennifer. I'll go by a cent. Objections? Okay. Any other comments on this? Yeah, I was for a roll call vote.
Sure. Um, Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Mike Edgington?
Yes.
Guy Wade?
Yes.
Jennifer Windguard?
Yes.
Amanda Sassy?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thanks, everyone. Thank you, Margaret. Also, number ten. I go to industrial park concerns, our planning and others.
So, yeah, so we're requesting a um, a meeting get set up in the future between the um, industrial park us, GBOS, in the uh, H L B and industrial park um, tenants, permit holders and leaseholders and stentary owners. I'm not sure if anyone's actually got the land yet. Um, I haven't had anything back. Uh, this, we'll have this next, next Monday.
Monday, great.
I have a.
Kyle?
Thing to talk with the board about on this issue. Um. We need to move forward with power and um, and so I'm pursuing that. And so tonight, I'd like to introduce to the board a proposition or a proposal from uh, the K T company to do electrical design for us, uh, in order for us to, you know, transform it, transform it a lot. We have to have a site plan of what electrical improvements we're gonna initially do there. And um, what we're looking at tonight is uh, a company would bring on an electrical engineer um, that would lay out our plan for uh, what the power is gonna be like there, so that chew gas uh, um, those will be connecting to their service um, once they install it. The board has already approved uh, close to eighteen thousand dollars for chew gas to bring in um, the electrical transformer to the lot. Uh, but in order to get to that step, we need to complete this phase. And basically, we would come up with electrical design documents and permitting um, to have this uh, electrical system put in. Uh, the engineer would provide us an estimate on what the cost will be for that. So the first step here would be just the design phase. Um, and then you would get an engineer estimate, and that would tell us how much it's gonna cost to actually put the electrical boxes on the property um, and get that going. Um, and we would work uh, over the next two to four months to get this done, so that we can hopefully um, uh, and really pushing for the two month phase, so we can maybe possibly do construction this year to get that electrical line in. And I'll just give you a reference here, so you can see what we're proposing. And it may be hard to see uh, from where you are. I'm sorry, I just got this today, so I wasn't able to put and pack it tonight. Um, but uh, this would be, um, so when you come into the industrial lot, this is the A W plant off to the uh, right in the picture, and then the five uh, now privately, at least four to five privately owned lots in industrial park, and then you come down and and this is the road maintenance uh, which became very small when this huge cul-de-sac came in. Um, but what we'd like to do is bring power to the upper corner, where we have a fence line with A W. Um, and then we have already existing bull rail here where we park our equipment in the summer. Um, in the winter, we have to put our equipment over here in a temporary spot, and it's very closed, condensed. Um, and we want to get back to where we should be operating out of, and on that bull rail, we would put uh, these little uh, red things indicate um, outlets that we put in, and it'd be one twenty and two twenty outlets for welding and things like that. Um, it's industrial power that we could put there for for those type of magnets, and then also lights. So we have some lights in the mornings, uh, when we're out there at two or three in the morning, trying to get things going in January. So um, so basically, overall, they get to a design that shows this, and then Chew Gas would put in their large transformer over here in the corner. Um, uh, we have a budget right now of seventy one eighty. So basically, we're, we're asking the board um, to um uh, allow me to use the improved funding for seventy two hundred dollars to complete this design, so we can get Chew Gas to put that transformer in for us, and then hopefully go right in and put those power outlets in, so next winter we're operating off that lot, not the H L B lot. So all new information, if you want, we can hold on up a month on this, or maybe uh, move our whatever meetings to a special meeting and try to address that point, but we're just working through.
Mike?
Maybe question, does this help anybody else at the industrial?
And the same.
Or is it just us?
Just us. What it does do is it opens up a temporary um, power source. Bob Wolf could take that over. He could park his equipment there. He could plug in. He could bring in all of all his own infrastructure and use that temporary tower source and and do that. Um, he's the only other operator on that side of the park that works in the winter. Um, there are new leaseholders in there, but they're not like snow removal operations. Um, and all the other five developed lots now, they have all the power at hand. They just haven't tapped into it. Um, and they have gas there too and telecommunications, so um, when they were building out the new road there, we requested the power in the Racha lot, but H L B didn't have the funding to provide it, so it didn't happen. So we're trying to uh, fix that problem.
And just for clarification, this, this is just a temporary solution. This isn't going to, this isn't gonna get us any closer to a firm solution, even if the magic wand was waived and.
This power would be a permanent location.
Okay.
It is put in, and you know, our long term goal is to stay in that
Right.
facility area. Um, but the boundaries would hopefully change when they go to realign everything, so that we have a better working space for us and the fire department in that location.
Can I suggest we um, we table this item now, but discuss it at the end of the manager meeting next week?
Okay.
I think this would be a good segue.
Okay.
It's exactly the sort of problem we're facing.
Yes. We can add that to the end of the agenda as a business item for GBOS to consider.
Thank you, Kyle. Great news. I was gonna ask if we would talk about it at the budget meeting, but this is a better.
Yes.
Relation, I think. Guy?
I would go mention the budget meeting too. I mean, that makes sense.
Okay.
I think it's good.
Any else from the board? Thank you. So, thank you. Uh, Levin, discuss an update Girdwood capital projects.
Uh, we'd like to put that on hold. Uh, honestly, I haven't had enough time to sit on that, but I'm working on interview reporting. And then I think we could discuss that as part of um, the budget meeting uh, at that point in time. And if we need to do anything with a motion, we could push it to your next month meeting.
Okay.
Priority.
Uh, any questions or comments from the board on that? Thanks, Kyle. Uh, number twelve, finalize agenda topics for the Illinois GBOS quarterly meeting next Monday for twenty four. Margaret, would you like to start us off?
Well, I'm wondering if you would rather postpone this discussion until the end of old business.
Mm-hmm.
And then we will have had some other conversations instead of revisiting.
Revisiting, okay. I would move number twelve to eighteen, basically.
Okay, yeah, that's a motion, do it formally. Um, we'll move number twelve to the end of um, old business.
Thank you for the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
With the order of the day. Thank you, Guy. Any further discussion or any discussion? Okay, and hearing no objections, I'll go by a cent, and twelve is down there. So then Karen Zaccaro can talk to us. Number thirteen, Girdwood Forest Fair twenty twenty three. Welcome and thank you for your patience.
Hi. Um, Karen Zaccaro, current secretary of the Girdwood Forest Fair. Um, I came and talked to you last month a little bit. Um, our site plan is not expecting to change a great deal from um, last year. We had a pretty successful fair last year. Um, so I was gonna give you an update where things were. Um, so I was going to give you an update where things were and maybe talk to you about the waiver and then see if you had any questions. Um, and then my expectation of Kyle's in agreement is maybe we'd go for that formal vote next month when I've got more stuff filing. Okay. So I'm just going to run down kind of a list. Most of the stuff is submitted with a few things outstanding, like for example, everybody wants to see the insurance. And sometimes it's just slow to get that final certificate from them. But we have the same company we've had for years. They're charging us about the same amount of money. So that one, we're not nervous about. But, um, we have applied for the noise permit. Uh, Tommy Salami is helping me out with the H L B permit and has that underway. Um, we're working to, to develop a little bit better camping map this year is one of the things when we talk with the fire chief, um, to kind of have a map that kind of shows where people are parking and we kind of have better exit ways. And they're going to lay out some hose back there, some fire hose. It's not going to be live with water in it, but if something happened, they could just go hook up right away. Um, and some better identification signs, like you're in the moose campground so they know where they are if something goes wrong. Um, our alcohol permit, we usually wait until we have more pieces ready, but we are gathering the TAFs cars, getting people age discrimination, people signed up, stuff like that. We're getting organized, but we haven't actually submitted for that alcohol permit. I talked about insurance and that includes the additional insurance, including the diamond. I think we've got the diamond mall plus lot again. The whole, that bus last year was, that was the location. I talked about that last time, but we're, we're even considering, um, we're still considering trying to put on even an extra bus on Saturday. So we would have even a quicker turnaround, but bus all three days. And that is actually live on the website. If you haven't gone to the website yet, go ahead and check it out because, uh, you can sign up for all your volunteer positions. You can sign up for camping, you can get your bus tickets, you can get your friends your bus tickets. Uh, so check it out. They've done a good job. We can get it more user-friendly on the, on the phones too. Um, I'm just skip that one because I'm going to talk to you about it in a minute. Uh, special event permit request. There's lots of special permits. You may not know this, but there are like three or four things that are called special permits. And apparently last year I lost one. But this year I think I've applied for all the special permits, sent one off today. Uh, and I think the traffic people will also be happy, not just the other special people. Rent again are on board and they're going to give us the same price as last year. Love the potty people. Security people, same thing. They're coming back. They're not going to charge us more. Um, inflation doesn't happen to the forest fair, at least not again this year. Um, uh, profit and loss statement, I will have that updated with, uh, um, uh, the final application. It's basically, it costs a lot of money to run the fair and, uh, we spend a lot of money. We make a lot of money and we give back luckily in the last couple of years. This year's over $40,000 back to all the community organizations. And I think one year before we had a little bit higher $50,000. So we're really happy to be able to give away that money. Even though there's a lot going in and a lot going out, the fact that the balance gets to come back into the community is great. Um, working on the fire permit, uh, fire marshal permits, uh, with, that's an A F D thing as well as working with the Gerdwood fire thing and the parade. Uh, good news, I am talking with the two, basically the two people that exist as far as entities for traffic. They, uh, they are both talking to me and willing to give me quotes. So I'm confident that we may have to spend more money, but we will have traffic people. And, um, and they're both, you know, versed in how to manage the parade. So parade will be the same, same time, 10 o'clock. Tell your friends to get here early. Um, and the towing contract, we're hoping that we'll have the same sort of relationship with the Jeep or the service area where we'll share the cost of the trucks sitting down here the whole time and then we each pay our own tow. Um, and the community appreciation was last week and it was really great to see. We had a lot of people, some great new people showing up to volunteer for different shifts and, um, had a good time. Um, and so then back to the one thing I was going to, first of all, let's see if there's any questions about anything I talked about last time or this time. Just general updates. Okay. So the thing I was going to ask you about tonight to consider, and I don't know whether you can vote on it, but maybe be ready to vote on it next year or next, uh, month is just the fee waiver. Every year we ask for the fee waiver, like sometime 2016, Tommy and Mallie convinced whoever was on the board at the time to sign it in perpetuity. But we do like to bring it to your attention every year that we are asking for the typical, um, parks and park fees to be waiting for forest fair. Because we do quite a bit of work in the fair, kind of scrupling up the park and the whole event is for the Gerdwood community to try to keep that. So, um, I also want to say that while it's a lot of fun and a lot of people enjoy forest fair, you know, from other places in here. It's also a really key part, having a big festival is a key part of being a four-season resort. And it's something that Gerdwood's known for. Even if you're a business owner and you don't particularly like get a bump in your business on forest fair weekend, it is a value for our community to be known with such kind of a fun, family-oriented event. Um, it still kind of has that kind of happy hippie vibe. Um, it's, I think there is value in that. So hopefully you'll consider that when you look at our fee waiver request.
Thank you, Karen. Uh, any questions first for Karen, even though she just asked, any questions?
I think you said, um, Tommy asked the people on board on 2016, whoever it was, Tommy was one of those. So it's probably was asking himself. Do we, I was going to ask a clarification. Do we, I think we did, um, I thought we did a multi-year fee waiver recently.
It is, I think it's not really, I don't think you have to pass a motion to pass the way. We just always want to make sure that the current board is aware that there is a resolution out there or writing that waives the fees for, for it.
Just to chime in, I feel like I heard that last year and if I don't recall, doing anything except acknowledging it, that I would entertain a motion if anyone would like to, it would be more of a, a gesture.
If we hear nothing, then we just go with what's written in that resolution. But, you know, the makeup of the board changes, so we always want to make sure that people are aware.
I got one question for, are the, the nonprofits that you donate to, are they on the website?
You know, I don't know if, if they put the whole list on the website now. Um, I had that elevator speech. I don't know if we're doing it like beyond that, but I, I mean, I can, you know, we hit up Ohio.
And I just thought it was really cool because there's a bunch of good programs.
Yeah. I mean, it hits.
The public knew that, that might, I don't know if you could.
I don't know for sure yet. I haven't like to search for it if she actually.
I just thought, I mentioned somebody, they were surprised and it was pretty good too, so.
Thanks, Chris. I'll let him know if you asked.
But just, yeah, I will take the motion then to, uh, we'll just do a motion to acknowledge that, uh, there is a fee waiver and we support that fee waiver.
Thank you, Mike. Do we have a second for that motion?
Also, Jennifer.
Any objections? We'll buy a sense on that. So we honor that resolution. Thank you. Kyle, did you have anything?
Just one thing, Karen, I just thought of it because you're here. Uh, somebody did call me and they said they were trying to sign up for volunteer shifts, but then they go back and they don't see their name on the website.
You know, I saw that going on too.
Yeah.
I mean, I didn't see it. I just saw people texting us, I don't know what the heck's going on.
Yeah. So I just passed along, I know you got some ID people on it.
Thank you. You know, and I was going to remind you, I know we talked about it, but just that the campground host is going to be.
Yes, we've already discussed it. We got a spot for them.
Good. Thank you.
All right. Great work. Good work.
Still got the win.
Uh, new beings to number 12. Oh. Okay. 14, request to renew resolution of support for no parking rights. And this is with packet, Timberline, Virgin Creek Falls, Chalhead.
So this is kind of, uh, we'd like for you to renew this, um, uh, motion that was passed in 21. Um, this has fallen off, uh, traffic's radar. I think they focused on, um, doing the improvements for like Loveland and those don't, those stop signs. But, um, yeah, that problem still persists up there. We have temporary signs and they disappear in the winter and we like to get permanent signs put in by, uh, traffic. So we're hoping that you will renew this so we have a new, uh, resolution that we can take to the new traffic director. And then hopefully, uh, move this along and get those signs placed up there at the top of the cul-de-sac.
What's the will of the body?
Yeah, I mean, I'm used to we, um, we rewrite this resolution. We're reflecting that there was a previous resolution and this is a continuation.
Thank you for the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Jennifer, seconds. Any discussion?
This is something you could do as staff, just basically take this.
We can rewrite it and then get it to.
Rewrite it.
Yep, and we'll put in the point that the 2021, uh, resolution was enacted upon.
Thank you for working on that. Time to fruition. Uh, any objections? Let's do a roll call, Kyle, just.
Sure. Brian Sullivan?
Yes.
Mike Edgington?
Yes.
Guy Wade?
Yes.
Jennifer Windguard? Amanda Saff?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. Agenda item 15, L U C 2404 dash zero five, Elias Greathor short flat action input requested by May 5th or, or May 15th director decision.
Yeah, so this is the, um, uh, short plats. This is a basically a request from Eliaska to subdivide or to divide a piece of attractive land they have into two parts. Um, the title in the map on the plan itself says, I think employee housing.
Yep.
Correct. So we infer that's what it's for. Um, and I think that maps some of the things, that matches some of the things that, um, that involve employees. Um, there's concern, I've heard concern in the community about how this will affect parking. I've heard concern about how it affects, um, whether that's actually a, is or isn't a safe place to, uh, put residential housing. Um, it has, at least it's, it's made me think about where, um, the avalanche hazard maps come from. Um, I think the hazard avalanche map that the muni has is quite a few years old and we know that precipitation is different and, you know, other things have changed. So I, I don't know whether that's an accurate or inaccurate, um, sort of determination of what's high hazard and what's moderate hazard. I just don't know. But I think that's an interesting question itself and how often do they get outdated and do they reflect reality? So this is a, um, this isn't something that has a public hearing. This is just, uh, this is something that's done typically by the, by the director of planning. Um, but we can, um, we can provide comments and I think perhaps should, at least to reflect what we've heard from the community.
Thanks, Mike, for introducing any comments first, second or third comments? I guess what is the advantage to dividing it versus keeping it the way it is?
Um, I, I don't know what particular goal is and I think that's differences in the, if it would be a separate, it would be a separate piece of land that could be used in a different way to the rest of the land. Um, it can, it'll be a different thing as far as tax rolls is concerned. It could be in the future, a different thing as far as ownership is concerned. So there's a number of advantages in the, in, in, uh, replating or doing a short plan. There are quite a lot of changes, but then that's just a, a short list of things.
Okay. Thanks. Brian, your hand is up.
Hi, thanks. Um, we wanted to address that question. Um, the only code in, within the muni that directly addresses building within avalanche zones, um, prohibits building within a high avalanche hazard zone. Um, and as I think folks have mentioned, this is in what's considered a moderate hazard avalanche zone. Those definitions are clearly defined by Art Mirz in the 1982 study that he did that established these avalanche zones. Um, there's also a great paper from 1992, uh, where there was an avalanche hazard workshop within Anchorage to clarify the Art Mirz study. Art Mirz is a renowned avalanche, um, expert in specifically in regards to, uh, building in avalanche terrain. Um, so I think the specific advantage here, and this is just my personal opinion, having looked at this, um, is that it very specifically carves this tract A, um, which is in the moderate hazard zone out of the high avalanche zone, which tract B remains in. And so if these two tracts stayed united, then as I read the code, and I'm just a layperson as far as code goes, then development would not be allowed in that area. However, I think that by subdividing it with this clearly, um, uh, delineated subdivision, that it, it allows the developer to build in a moderate hazard zone. Um, and I guess the things that I think are important to note here is that moderate does not mean none. Um, there are a number of other residential buildings within that moderate hazard zone. Um, the difference with this lot is that it's, um, it, it's, it's in, well, it's written in the, in the request as a employee housing. And so I think the question is, you know, individuals choose when they buy their home that's in the moderate hazard zone to do that. Do employees also make that conscientious decision is a question that I would have. Thanks.
Thanks, Ryan. Any other comments or questions from the board? Questions? Guy?
Um, I guess we think there's going to be uh, uh, employee housing there. Is that correct? But there's no formal plans for that.
Valleys.
That's what it says on the plat. I'll show you here. You scan down and you can get there, it says employee house.
In that corner there.
Yeah, so land uses.
If someone online that might be.
Well, what kind of input are they or what are they looking for? A, a letter, uh?
It's, um, it's just comments, any comments on the, yeah.
Personal comments from G P O S.
Yeah. Or any member of the public.
Larry, do you have something to add?
I do. Um, this is Larry Daniels. I have, uh, two comments, one of which is, uh, I believe that, uh, recommendation that, uh, note to the plat, um, addressing the fact that the parcel is in a moderate avalanche zone. Uh, and I can tell you there are, uh, uh, there's precedence for that. Uh, the day lodge, when it was built, um, it was, uh, requirement of its, um, permitting to identify it inside the building as well as to the plat, uh, that it was in a moderate avalanche zone. Uh, my other comment would be that, uh, uh, on large, on, uh, large crowd days, uh, several times this year already, um, there was substantial parking in the neighborhood uh, on public streets, many times where there really wasn't much, uh, extra room. And I am a nearby neighbor, so I would be concerned about losing, there's at least 100 parking spots that would be lost um, in, um, in this development. So that's, that's another hundred cars on public streets, um, making it difficult to access, uh, property, uh, for emergency vehicles and others. So those would be my two comments.
Thank you, Mr. Daniels. Jennifer?
Good. I just wanted to back up what Larry was saying on that because, uh, we are seeing traffic all the way down these streets now. Not just on the weekends, but like every military Monday, it's going down blocks away from the day lodge. And, and definitely these streets, I don't think are designed for that kind of, uh, street parking. So I would agree with Larry. We, we already have a problem. So if we're going to subtract 100, I have no idea with those cars you're giving, I suspect even farther into the neighborhoods that are already clawing, clawing.
Thank you. Any other board comments? Um, we could continue to, it's a discussion, but if we would like to independently write, we, that's probably a good option as well. We could also send something as a body. good option as well, we could also send something as a body and with the the items that we've heard, but we don't have formally a regular meeting before May fifth or May fifteenth to draft something. So or or waiting till then to do that. All I I'm thinking to have, I haven't been to that many resorts in the US, but they all had had parking issues and then it turned into busing lowering vehicles. Everyone drives vehicles in Alaska, it seems like. So that I feel like is whether the parking lot is there or not is and lots of vehicles. Grace, your hand is up.
Thank you. Grana, I I also want to kind of go on the same path that Larry Daniels had shared with you. At an acre and a half of which this disposal is being considered or this short plat is being considered, you're looking at a loss of approximately a hundred and eighty seven parking spaces. And that is based on the commercial calculation of a parking space being approximately three hundred and fifty square feet. And so it's not just a hundred spaces we're gonna be losing of parking, it's approximately a hundred and eighty seven. And I think the this very significant issue here in the community as we address this, not only the avalanche question, but certainly the issue of life safety. And I think that one needs to be directed to our police and fire service folks and EMT of how are they managing or being able to manage on high volume days at the resort and when we have this overflow and now taking away existing parking, what does that mean to our community? I've I've seen at times when we have high volumes in Girdwood events that literally, if I'm not mistaken, I've seen cars parked on the mountain itself. Because not only have the three parking lots in the day lodge been over maxed, they are literally parking cars on the mountain. So it is a concern, I think we should all be, you know, take addressing here and whether GBOS needs to send a letter in in regarding to this request for the short plat, I would recommend that you do. Thank you.
Thank you, Grace. Jerry, I saw your hand. You have something? Okay, Mr. Nyman?
Hi there. Yeah, I've looked at that issue for a while, like everyone else has. But I I've noticed in some ski areas, what they'll do is they'll burrow into the side of the hill. And so you got their first tier and then you're, you know, you got people on top, but they make, you can make more parking space into the hill. There's always, it's expensive, there's engineering design considerations. It gives you sort of a bunker too, in a way for the first guys who are under under the concrete. And then there's there's snow on top of, you know, there can be the cars or snow on top of it. But you know, that's, it's really, we have limited space here and and those more expensive solutions could be in the offing versus convincing people to take a bus from somewhere else. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Kyle?
So I was contacted by the engineer who's working on this because we were discussing drainage issues through there and one particular is that they will be abandoning the second entrance to that lot too. And we had just recently installed a fish culvert in there, and if they do remove it, we ask them to reopen the channel to to and will retain the materials that we put in for that project. But my largest concern in that discussion was the parking, with this issue that we dealt with. We did reach out to resort management this summer, just to hear about the parking issue and see if we could deal with it. We had an episode where the school bus took four turns to turn the corner on Loveland on a Monday. And it was videotaped and we forwarded that on. And one suggestion we had is some better efficiency with parking. I know it's a staffing issue with the resort and trying to get enough people to work and, you know, and, you know, for example, at a fair, people park cars tighter and 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 also be up there, what screws up a weekend is when somebody decides to parallel park instead of the way they should park and then everybody starts parking like that. And then also tier three, my suggestion was is to remove the boneyard up there and open up more parking in that location. And and just have some more efficiencies on site with parking. The engineer did tell me that he was tasked to look at expanding tier two and tier three for more parking with this development. And so that's the last I heard of it, as for comment back from them, but but we have expressed those those concerns and that was brought up at the Public Safety Advisory Committee and so we emailed written about that. So so I think this resort is aware.
When you say we have expressed concerns, you do mean as a formal comment to this plating action?
No, to this, to from staff to the Aliasque Resort. We haven't, I am I am planning to write the same comments within the the comments section. Staff are requested for comments as well.
Right. I mean, that's that's effective, we would do, there any advantage in us doing it as a board rather than you doing as a service area manager? I don't think there is. And if you're, if you want to make the same comments, I don't know that it's, we can, we can also do that.
Yeah, my comments will be mostly focused to the impact on parking.
Okay.
Because I'm not trained in avalanche awareness or, you know, topography for that, so I'll be focused more on the public safety aspect of it.
Question? Brian?
I can kind of speak also to the to the parking situation there and and I know that that management at the at the resort has looked into where they can expand parking on that tier two and tier three. Tier three is a little tough because that dirt out there is being cured and if it's stable enough to park more on top of it. But as they as they they work through a project, they'll probably be able to create some parking options also over by the base of Tanaka. I know that they're they're taking a look, you know, moving that tier two parking further into that zone right there. So I think there's some, there's some options with parking. And a lot of the, a lot of that end of the parking lot is actually more snow storage than than parking spaces, so they're gonna have to come up with a a snow storage plan that doesn't move the snow storage into adjoining parking areas.
Thank you. Comments from the board? What's the little body on this item? If knowing that now Kyle's writing letter from as the Girdwood's area manager and you can independently write letters or comments?
Not formally, I don't think there's any benefit in getting us a board to do it, I don't think we have quite enough information yet. But if things happen, but it does get platted into something separate and there is development, then we have very specific concerns. But with respect to.
Should we keep this item on agenda for next?
But it's not gonna be too late, it's only.
Right, it would be different. Okay, I'll move on to sixteen, Community Council Boundary Study, which is in the package. And it has listed for us on the third, page eleven. Page eleven, the gentleman's they've listed that Girdwood's district. Kyle, would you like to speak for this?
Yeah, so the every ten years, there's a exercise of going through all the community councils and asking a question about the boundaries that are appropriate. Things changed. This is a list, or this document provides a list of all the suggestions that have been made from surveys and individual comments, I think there were five comments about turning it on. Oh, sorry, there were five comments about Girdwood Boundaries. One from Mark Barbara FCC, who was responding to several questions being asked him from from community members, three from community members and one from the language in the narrative of section four, I believe, is not quite accurate. There is gonna be a revision to it, maybe this is the revised, no, this, there'll be a revision to this, which to reflect the the actual situation closely. There are four options which are presented here, I think technically there's a fifth which could be, let's say option E could be is its own community council, I don't think anyone likely is gonna want to do that because it'd be very, very small, much smaller than other community councils. Other small community councils are being proposed as to be a body, like water entry. But this is more for awareness, if we want to make formal comments, we can. This is probably, you know, what's what's presented and what's in the document. I'm just gonna take a second just to re-read this, there was something to it, quite accurate in the description. Oh, yes, the the last sentence on the first column says persons living outside of GPOS service area part of the community council district cannot vote against the organization or represents them GPOS land use committee. Of course, people outside GPOS, the Gode Valley Service Area can vote for people who represent them in land use that are full voting members of land. So that statement is inaccurate and to be revised in the future version of this document.
Do you have, Mike, and so far in your since learning of this last week, do you have any feeling on which of these pages you'd be right to use?
I think no, no, I don't know, the would say one, option C is also not quite an accurate description of what you have to do. So if you expand the boundaries of the service area, that'd have to, that'd have to be a vote. Both the existing service area and the annexed area, which would be Upper Crow Creek. And they would be voting to become part of the service area and pay the associated taxes for the service area. You can, I'll leave it as an exercise for other people to decide whether that plan is likely to pass or not in Crow Creek if they want to do that. But I would say, if you know, if Crow Creek wanted to, wanted to do that, then that would be a separate activity from the boundary changes for community councils. But because that is one of the options, option C is basically a public vote. It does kind of pose the question of, you know, the others just in position from outside. Well, make no change, or, you know, people from outside the community make the decision for us. And one of the options is actually a public vote, so I mean, I would say if there is gonna be a boundary change, we should probably, I would recommend something as a as an actual pocket mandate for doing so and have a vote. But that's a personal thing.
I got a question, another if you.
Go ahead.
So that the next step in your community council's role, it says it's they're gonna create this draft report and recommendations. That hasn't been done yet, right? So this this was written on March fifteenth and so that hasn't been done yet. And then there'll be a two month public comment period after that. What formal comments? So then they'll hold a public hearing this week.
Could wait? Or we could advise against two of the options? But I feel like speaking on behalf of members that aren't in the GBSA areas.
Yeah, I think what we, my sense is that there were some inaccuracies in this and there was information missing, so I've had, I reached out to Tom Davis who wrote this, we had a discussion, he's gonna fix things which are wrong and reproduce a version which is more accurate. I think after that, then we could, we could probably either comment on that or wait until there's a recommendation to come out. And individually, again, we can make comments.
Okay. I like that idea. That sounds quite sensible at this point. Not ideal. Any other comments?
I agree with that.
We'll move on then. For seventeen, Assembly Short Term Rental and the STR work session from seven. The PowerPoint is in the packet that Randy Salt worked on and we, I don't know what the action are.
To actually, it's dark, it's simply never still on.
Randy, you still here?
I am, still here.
After ten.
Nice.
Yes, please.
Thanks, Ryan. I know you, yeah, it's very late. Although it's it's not late for an assembly meeting, it's, this is still earlier, but you're just.
Still early, yeah.
We got the end of consent agenda by now.
Speaking of which.
I think you have to make a motion to extend the meeting.
Oh, sorry, yes, we actually won't, two past ten o'clock, sorry, we just had to do something for, but so we should extend it until ten thirty.
Okay, we have a motion to extend, hopefully not till twenty thirty, but till ten thirty. You have a second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Thanks, guys, any objections? Okay, continuing on.
Sorry, um, yeah, could you just, I know in the presentation you you said a couple of things about Girdwood and I just wondered if you could just summarize where this, where the where the actual ordinance is and whether you, whether you think this would have, whether this would apply, well, whether you think it should transition to Girdwood or whether there should be some additional work and some additional changes from us.
Yeah, so I, so I went into this looking to push short term rentals to to create more houses and I've kind of come out of a different place. If you look at the presentation, where I'm at is probably what I would support is a very simple permitting model that protects the the enjoyment of the renter as well as the peaceful enjoyment of the surrounding community. So it essentially gives municipality a bigger stick. And I think that's true for most of Anchorage. Girdwood's probably, Girdwood is more unique, given that it's a resort community and and you will have a housing problem and and I, and we've seen in other resort communities, you could probably buy a million dollar home, put it into STR service and it's still pencil out. So would I ever, if I ever get the AO back from legal, what I would like to do is share it with GPOS, you could take a look at those potential ideas that have consequences either way, there's certainly examples where they've pushed short term rentals back into housing, which were the only way that owners were getting the extra income to be able to keep that house or an ADU that they rented out that enabled them to keep that house and get by. So there's certainly negative consequences, so I I kind of got back to more of a free market approach, the market will eventually adjust itself. And if someone builds a house with the intent to rent it as an STR, at least they're still building the house, it may not be an STR later today. So I, I tell you the truth, I'm really nervous about doing anything with Girdwood. What I'd rather have is is have Girdwood look at the potential levers that other communities have used. And if you feel there should be legislation, we can tack it on to this as like an overlay district.
So do you have a sense of when we may see that AO? I think I've asked you this many times.
Yeah, it's it's been, it's been sitting with Dean for almost, for probably over two months now. What I'll probably do is just ask for it back from him so I can have the latest copy. I know he's updated the code sections where it would belong and I can go ahead and make the adjustments to it to make it to where it is, just a simple permitting process with language for an overlay district, we can even have the levers in there. It's a lot easier just to cross them out, what you'd want, what you don't want. And then if Girdwood wanted to be an overlay district, we could do that, but again, my my thought process is it's a very, it's a very, it's a double edged sword.
I think it's something you have to be careful with because this, you know, it's easy to, it would be easy through a mechanical process to say keep with a free for all or bad and all, but obviously the reality has to be some, a sensible solution has to be somewhere in between the two. Unless it did a little bit.
Right.
I mean, when you say overlay district, we've also got chapter nine, which covers the whole of Girdwood anyway, so if it's. And I mean, we can, when you say overlay district, we've also got chapter nine, which covers the whole of Gerdwood anyway. So if it's enacted within chapter nine. Then we have a lot of things which are separate from the rest of title twenty-one. So if it's done within. Within twenty-one, is that actually how the AO is structured? Is it changed within title twenty-one or elsewhere?
Uh, that's what we're looking at was title twenty-one. That's why, that's why Dean has it to make sure it's applicable to the relevant code. But of course, Gerdwood, you're right, we just put it in the Gerdwood section and that would cover it.
Yep. Okay, thanks. So hopefully in the next couple of weeks, we should see the AO.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike, for having that. Thank you, Randy, for still being here and discussing it with us and all of your work on this.
You're welcome.
Anything else for now? Okay. Okay, number eighteen.
Yeah, four twelve, twelve revisited. Thank you. So now that we've had the other conversations. I think it's going to be easier for us to talk about the meeting manager meeting. We do have. Confirmation that Kent Cole Hayes is expecting us. And today, because posting of this meeting was required, what we posted were items one through four. And five, six and seven were left off. So the reason for that being that we had not discussed them. They landed on this tentative agenda just because they were swirling around with land use and and then here today. So. What I have heard in the conversation so far is the item number one. We now have the letter that we'll be sending, although I think you're planning on sending it to Lance Wilbur, not the Assembly Enterprise and Utility Oversight Committee of the whole. But we could talk about that. And then as a separate item there, the sewer line. So we'll discuss the letter. We can discuss the. Resolution that you also provided and the sewer line as three separate topics under. Gerdwood Housing Concerns, as well as introducing that we're working on a subcommittee. That sound good? Adding that one. I don't have. Any new language for item number two, GBSA seeking assistance. With the Gerdwin Industrial Park needs, although we will be adding the. We want to discuss that.
Yeah, could we add specifically the, there's issues of accessing. Permit permitted sites, those issues of. Infrastructure, particularly electricity. And then there's still the question of the long-term plan. There are other issues as well, where they will fall under those means three, I think.
Okay, so we might be emailing tomorrow just to make sure that I get it right. Cemetery bonding in twenty twenty-four. Still want to have that.
Is that original case so far? I don't know if you talked to Tommy today, so. Do you get say seeking assistance?
Yeah, well, and this is with the OMB director, I think, where we left it last was with legal. So this is a different conversation.
We should be clear about what you're seeking. So if there is something that you need OMB to do. Usually OMB jumps in after the bond language is written. And. They just clarify how that's gonna work.
Can we ask that Bill Fossey's there for three?
Uh, Bill Fossey's not employee of the municipality, so they can't request Bill Fossey to be there. He's a contractor of the assembly.
So assembly could request.
Yeah, so you have to work with the assembly member to have him there. They'd be paying for his time, too.
Is that because there's a, there's a specific.
Yes, and I thought he was starting to work on it instead of Dean Gates. Because Dean still hasn't written about the area-wide. Finding he had.
Yeah, that might be a discussion that happens with the assembly members, because I think that's in the. And that's, and administration will put it over to the assembly to deal with it. So that might be.
And it will be the new army representative.
Correct. Well, Zach and Randy probably figuring out what's going on with that. It sounds like Dean's behind on a lot of AOs, so. So, yeah, I think.
Given, given when this would, when the bottom process is later in the year, I I wonder if it makes sense just to not have it on this month and then.
I was gonna mention that probably later in the year would be a good idea to bring it up.
Right, and our next meeting with them is in July.
Okay.
And then hopefully a Gerdwood Cemetery Committee can work out those issues correctly. And then. If you need the municipal manager to be involved, you know, we can get back to their meeting, but we may be able to resolve that outside of this meeting.
I appreciate that guidance and I'm okay with removing number three.
Okay. The possibility of increasing transfer station hours and staffing.
May I advise that we probably put that one on hold. There's a transition in leadership there right now and. They're just trying to keep things operational. And I know that they've fixed a lot of the problems, even hired local for operations down there, so. We want to see if somebody new comes in for it, because the acting director probably will not make any changes at this point in time.
And then we'll do that as well.
Okay, and then like, is this the three possible new items?
Again, I don't, at five and six, I don't think. Reasonable topics for this meeting.
Great.
And I'm not sure that. I don't think boundaries in this is a, boundary isn't a municipal. Is a municipal manager item either, so I don't think any of those make sense.
Great. And then we talked about adding as a separate item just for GBOS at the end, the power to the industrial park lot.
Yes.
Anything else?
Yes, that would follow.
Yeah, usually at that point, we could let the manager go and then just finish business.
Okay.
Yeah, but I think it's an example of the problems we're facing from earlier, so it's good to have.
Correct. I think we can bring it up and earlier and showing what we're trying to accomplish.
And item number two.
Yes.
Yeah.
So you want to have the GBOS vote on it and item number two or come back?
I think we have it at the end.
Yes.
Yeah, we would discuss it during item two, show the plans that we're trying to accomplish.
Sounds good. Is there anything else that you'd like to do to refocus and target any of these? Points, I think, being really respectful of the fact that we have limited municipal staff that are going to be. There. We'll be having Mr. Cole Hayes, Mr. Wilbur. I think just really making sure that we are focused and strategic in the conversations, making sure that we have direct asks. I think the letter helps.
Yes, thank you. Guy?
I had a question. How can we, are going to sit into this to make Mrs. Alatol and. And the other one in Oversight Committees, how do like, that's where they make the, that decision on that.
I think we just haven't talked about exactly the routing of that letter yet.
I think it's reasonable to send it to the two chairs of the Oversight Committee.
And what about to the HLB themselves? For the HLB AC themselves? Take the chair.
Yeah, maybe. That probably makes sense, the chair of.
So we'll talk off about how to do that. I don't think that. Anyway, well, good job. You've trimmed your agenda from potential seven items to two.
I will be finding a briefing to the city manager and Director Holber, so. Um, I'll be working on that tomorrow so they can prepare to be prepared for this meeting, so.
The question about the sewer line, is that likely to bring in anyone from ABU?
Uh, I would suggest that they probably bring in somebody from ABU in their capital projects.
Okay, sound good? Sounds better?
Yeah.
Good. Thank you for making that possible, everyone. Going to new business. Number eighteen, Timberline Road Improvements to Alpean and Vale Loveland Intersections staff.
This is my opportunity to hit on this because right now we see the road in the worst condition of the year and. Uh, we did not have success with those state grants. They weren't supportive of it because we didn't really have a full design document ready with cost estimates. Whereas they really loved our forwards because we had done all the work and had all plans and engineer estimates all completed. So I do think we need to take a hard look at this internally and do those steps of having. A shovel-ready project and we pay upfront with the design work and get the engineer estimates completed. And do that. So once again, I've asked the potato company to come up with a a cost proposal, which they are working on now. We're actually doing a site visit this week and then we're gonna do a site visit after full meltdown. And then we're gonna look at all of that and they're gonna come back at us with a proposal. We looked at this in two thousand and sixteen. And I presented to the board. The board was lukewarm about it, so we didn't go forward, but I think we're back here again and we recognize it as a capital improvement for. Our communities briefly. So I'll be coming back up with you with a proposal in the coming month.
I didn't want to extend the meeting too long, but the, in in that proposal, are they going to, are they going to build to full collector standard? According to code or is, or is that what they're going to? Proposed in terms of the design?
They're gonna look at what the minimum standards are that we needed to accomplish within that.
Not, we need by code or we need by function?
By, uh, the community measure was required by code and by function. You know, because if we end up being funding in our project, we have to take a, what can we afford to do? So, yeah, full collector standard. Probably would not be, and that's been an issue I've discussed, you know, in the sense of like separated pathways and things like that. We have a major snow storage issue problem in that section of road and we wouldn't be able to maintain an open pathway in the middle of winter. So we have to store less snow somewhere. So those things are all being discussed in that aspect. So maybe a two-point, two-point proposal which shows you, here's the high end, here's the low end.
Okay, thanks, Todd. Uh, number nineteen, Gerdfire requests for new two-place trailer fire department.
So this is in response to incident that we had. One of the trailers was buried back here in the corner. And when the loader went in to clear it, he didn't see it. He caught the front end of it, broke it off and. And so Western is replacing the trailer that they broke. It's fifteen hundred dollar value. But in order to replace the trailer that they do need for their storage of their snow machines, the total is about thirty-two hundred dollars. So we're asking to use the, to make up the rest of the funds out of the capital fund to replace that trailer. Trailers are in stocks. We can buy one anytime. We just need approval to move forward on it. So. So we'll be talking more about that next month's meeting as it's new business, so.
How come Western's not replacing?
They're replacing the value of the piece of equipment that they broke. So like you get a car accident, you replace the value of the car that was broken, not what you want to buy in that aspect. But we had it appraised and that's what it came down.
Thanks. Anything else from the board? Any motion to adjourn?
I just, I wanted to point out that in the reports at the end of the packet, there's one from the Gerdwood Library. And the acting manager, Ambler Stevenson, who has been in his acting role for some time, is. Likely to be stepping down as they're starting interviews for the new Gerdwood Branch Manager. So. I wanted to make sure that you are aware of that so that if you were through the library, you can thank him for stepping into that role.
Where's that?
Report is before the Jay Bear report.
Okay.
On the other.
Or Jay Bear.
Side of the very.
Okay, Margaret.
And the new couch is awesome.
New couch. I saw that somewhere. Okay.
Need exchange, good things going on, but especially to thank him for his help.
Okay, I don't see any other reports. Is there anything else? Or? We have most to adjourn. Second? Wait a second. Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you.